November 24, 2008 Board of Selectmen meeting. Excuse me. First I'd like to ask the women at the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to be a republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I've got an 01 mic.
First item on the agenda is announcements. It's with heavy heart, heavy heart, I make an announcement tonight that Doris Estraski, a longtime Assistant Clerk in town and mother of our Fire Chief Peter Estraski has passed away. Her service was today and I believe the funeral is tomorrow, is that correct?
Tomorrow.
So certainly we send out our condolences to Chief Estraski and the entire Estraski family because, and to all Doris's friends and neighbors as well, she's been very actively involved in this community for many years, many years, and you know, we're all going to miss her, so. Any other announcements?
Yes. Last Thursday evening, I attended the quarterly meeting of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, and they dealt with the subject of regionalization and shared services. They handed out a brochure, case studies of success and failure of ways that communities have tried to get together to save money by sharing services. But as part of the presentation, they stressed that shared 911 dispatch would be quite useful for a lot of towns to look at. They talked about the merger of councils on aging and sharing senior centers. They talked about regionalization of information technology services, which was very good, the idea of a centralized server base on which a number of towns could then upload their websites and things of that sort. A lot of good discussion in that meeting. The second thing, a number of folks may have heard some rather intemperate comments that I directed at Town Council at Town Meeting last week regarding Article 30. Town Council spoke with me afterwards and sent me a copy of an email in which the legality of the bylaw amendment was addressed. Unfortunately, it never got to the proponent, Mr. Fortner, before Town Meeting, and it never got to the Board of Selectmen prior to our taking a vote on that particular Article 2 to support it in going forward. Had we been aware of the questionable legality of the article, I don't think it would have been moved on Town Meeting floor.
Well, I still haven't seen any such thing. But I would like to say that the action of the moderator in not allowing a motion on Article 29 was completely uncalled for and an abuse of authority. It's not the job of the moderator to decide what people can vote on. The legality or illegality of a particular zoning article is ruled on by the Attorney General's office, not by the Town Moderator. And I think this is a practice that he has gotten into, and I think it serves him and the town poorly.
Well, I certainly voiced my opinion at Town Meeting on that.
That you did.
Any other announcements? Okay. We have a packed room this evening. I would suspect the vast majority, you are here for the agenda item on the winter maintenance policy, is that right? Relative to Citizens Forum, what I'd like to do is, I mean, I think each of us who sits around this table has heard from many, if not all of you, at one point or another in the past several weeks. I don't know that there's anything new that we would hear in two minutes at Citizens Forum relative to the policy. We've received many emails, many phone calls, et cetera. I certainly feel that I've heard, you know, essentially every perspective on this particular agenda item. So I would encourage anyone who is here for that article, just to wait patiently. I think we've got a path forward that should be deemed, you know, reasonable and equitable for everybody involved. So I'd ask you not to join us at Citizens Forum right now to speak unless you feel it's absolutely something critical that has not been shared with anybody. But I really do feel that, you know, we've heard almost all the objections and complaints and concerns and confusion that we could possibly hear on this at this point. Okay. And we said that, is there any, can I see by show of hands who is interested in addressing the Board at Citizens Forum this evening?
I don't have anything new to add, but Jimmie Earp, I do have everything written up that I was going to say.
Okay. And that's something I did want to say was, after the Board discusses the winter maintenance policy under Old Business, first item under Old Business, anyone who did have anything prepared for us will certainly accept those. And if the place where we end up at the end of this meeting is not where y'all hoped we would end up, I think you've got a commitment from at least me and hopefully the rest of the Board that if there's still concerns, that we will address them as quickly as we can. But I would just ask you to be somewhat patient with us if you could, okay? Okay. Mr. Fortner, I saw your hand go up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address two issues, both of which occurred at the recent Town Meeting. I stood up and spoke in a positive manner for Article 39, the amendment to the zoning bylaw re-power plants. And one of the things that, one of the things that I said was that the, I had asked for some more information about what the benefit to the town would be from the town administration. I did that at the Spring Annual Town Meeting. What I indicated last Tuesday night was that essentially I didn't get any real information. What I also said was, the discussion that took place prior to the Spring Annual Town Meeting was with a different Board of Selectmen. And I said, this is a new Board of Selectmen. And I asked people to give the, this new Board of Selectmen, the opportunity, the opportunity to work with some proponents for bringing additional industry into the town. I please ask you to seize that opportunity. Do not, please do not refer it to staff. Do it yourself. Have someone go to Bellingham and find out what Bellingham did or didn't do, what their benefits are or are not. And please be proactive as a Board of Selectmen, because six months went by and there was no proactivity. The second issue refers to the comments that Selectmen Potasky made. I was appalled at a comment that was made. And I was appalled at a comment that was made about the legality or non-legal portion of a particular article. And Mr. Potasky, in fact, said, after I asked the question, from whence did you get that information? Mr. Potasky asked Town Council, how come you didn't tell us? So I'm going to give you some free advice. And whenever I do that, I always emphasize to people that the advice is free and therefore is worth what it's worth. I suggest that the Board of Selectmen adopt a policy that all communications between anyone in town and Town Council be in writing, either email or snail mail. The reason for that is to help preserve the institutional learning that may come as a result of those communications. I would further urge you to make sure that every communication is in fact copied to the entire Board of Selectmen, so that the entire Board of Selectmen is aware. Let's see, the Board of Selectmen are charged by the town bylaws for prosecuting and defending the town in all legal matters. So whenever Town Council is asked something, I believe that the Board of Selectmen should in fact be completely aware of everything that takes place. The comment that I was appalled at was when Town Council turned and said, well, I told the Town Manager, that's not good enough for me. So my free advice is, please take charge of Town Council, you appoint Town Council, and just that. Thanks for your time.
Okay. So I saw several hands up in the back, I'm sorry. Mr. Barrow? Just before you begin your comments, we do have an agenda item later to accept the minutes from our executive session relative to the complaint you filed. If this is in any way related to those complaints, the same complaint, then I would ask you just to hold your comments. If this is new information for us, then I certainly would invite you to share them with us, but please limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes, correct. I do have some new information. I appreciate the time. I do have some, and I will go over this within two minutes, I promise. Barrow, 143 West Street, Oxbridge. Just want to go over this. This is a formal written request to respectfully reopen the investigation based upon newly discovered evidence from the town of Oxbridge public records recently obtained. So my letter to the Board about that is right there on page one. Page two of this is the Oxbridge Police Department Public Records Request dated October 20th. The next page says Packet Number One. Just so you understand, on this Public Records Request Packet, one and three were put together by Sergeant Emmerich. Packet Number Two is the correspondence from Chief Freitas. Under Packet One, which is the next page, basically was a request for any misuse of red light violations to the three corporations license plates. The Public Records Request on the papers at Oxbridge Police Department shows no records to display, as you can see in Sergeant Emmerich's writing, right above Item Number One. The next page, Item Number Two, is the next license plate, shows no items to display. The next page says Item Number Three, which is the third license plate the nonprofit has, shows no records to display. I asked Sergeant Emmerich what this means. He says, he queried the license plate in the in-house computer. It would pull up any complaints, violations, citations, anything. Call taker logs, nothing. Absolutely nothing came up in the Oxbridge Police Computer. The next page, which is Item Number Four, Item Number Four was a Records Request to Oxbridge Police Department, asking about misuse of red light violations by anybody, any motor vehicle driver, including other association corporation members. There is a listing you have in front of you of six violations from 1/1 of 2000 to 12/2805. Those are the only six violations in the whole entire town, and none of those names that are blacked out there, because I compared the list of names of the citations to the association members, and none of those names match myself, nor none of the names ever match any association members. So the answer to that question of misuse of red lights by any association members is a negative. Packet Number Two, this is what Chief Freitas put in his own Records Request to me. The next page, right here, Sergeant, Peter Estraski, Sergeant Emmerich, Emergency Management, and I sent letters to Trooper Sanchez to assist in his disaster plate revocations. So right here is an email on, right from Town Public Record, that shows that he sent an email to, appears this gentleman, Thomas Green, which I guess he's from the state police, about the, he aided in assisting disaster plates. Right there is the Town Public Record from the Police Department of what he wrote himself. The next page is...
Mike, you have three minutes.
Yes, yeah, I'm almost done. The next page is a Public Records Request that I received directly from Chief Freitas. It's a fax from FBI Hudson. Right on his cover sheet says, cover sheet plus two pages. If you turn to the next page, the next page does not have a fax header on it, nor is it two pages to what the FBI agent states. I placed a phone call to this FBI agent, and I talked to him and explained that I did a Public Records Request from the Oxbridge Police Department and asked him what he faxed to Freitas. I then told him what I had on the phone, and he says that is not the, that is not the FBI document that he faxed to Freitas on 2/1607, and he has no idea what this second page is, and nor did he say that he wrote it himself. But it came directly from Chief Freitas's packet that was personally hand-delivered to me.
All right, Mike, we've got your packet. We've got your new complaint.
And the next page says, yes.
Mike, I'm going to ask you to stop. We've got your packet, we've got your complaint. Okay? You've got a request here to reopen your complaint.
Okay. I would like the Board to make a motion to reopen my complaint.
It's not on the agenda, so. Our policy has been, when we get written complaints...
Right.
...we act on them. You've given us a written complaint.
Right.
We'll act on it.
So are you saying to me publicly, you're going to reopen the complaint?
The policy of the Board is, when we get a written complaint, to act on it. You've just given us a written complaint. We will act on it.
Well, this is, no, this is, I'm just asking to reopen the same complaint. I'm not stating a new complaint, just so you understand. It says right here, to reopen the current investigation based upon newly discovered evidence.
But that's a conclusion we might reach after reading the documents you gave us.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Without, I glanced at it as you were speaking, but obviously I can't make a definitive judgment at this time.
Right, correct, yes, okay.
But we know what your request is.
Oh, okay. So basically, just so I understand, you are reconsider, you will reconsider this paperwork I just turned in.
I think it would be appropriate, yes.
Yes, okay. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, just like to state that I do feel it would have been in best interest of both parties, that both parties were present at the hearings or investigations...
There was no hearing.
Investigations.
Okay.
That's the way I feel. This is going to go round and around, we get two set of people in here. I don't care if there has to be 1,000 police officers in here, but get the story and get it right. That's just my feelings.
Okay. Let's talk about their hands in the back.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Sure. Same commentary will apply. If you've got new information, then share it with us in three minutes or less. And then if you have a written statement, give it to us, and we'll go from there.
New information. I would be brief, I promise. Due to the Public Records Request, I have come across some new information. When I requested, I've always said...
Hold on one second.
Mr. Chairman, if they're, I really think it's best if they're related to the previous investigation in any way, that we review the packet and we don't get into the matters right now.
No, I think I agree with you. You know, you provided all the written documentation that you're going to now read to us.
Oh, no, that's just a piece of it, because we're only given two minutes, and we know this, and we've been kind of suppressed since day one, and I can only agree with Mr. Dessalits here. And let me put it in the form of a question and not say anything again. When do we get our equal time? When does the fairness come, Mr. Bagdad, Jerry, and when? Or is this just the Republic of Chief Freitas, and he does what he wants, when he wants, however he wants, and the rest of us sit here and suffer? Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have more than this?
Oh, more, there's more. But it would take an hour, and we need the same time that he was given.
But I'm not asking that you take an hour now.
Right.
But I am asking that if you have written information, that you give it to us so that we can study it. It's not reasonable to present us with multi-pages of documents and ask us to make a judgment on what we have just read.
Okay.
Or not even just read. But if you will give us all the information that you have, speaking personally, I will promise I will go through it.
Do you want us to consider this your entire submission, or...
No, it's not my entire submission, more to follow. There's just some statements that I heard that were made in Executive Session that, I mean...
First of all, excuse me, you should not be able to hear anything that was said in the...
Well, lots of things shouldn't be happening, but it is. Lots of things shouldn't be happening. And I noticed that when I say that to you, you instantly look down. And it's like, you know...
I'm writing notes.
Okay. So...
Are you saying you heard it directly from me?
No, I'm not saying I heard it directly from anyone. But what I'm saying is that I have heard that statements were made in there. Whether they're, whether they're accurate or not, I don't know. But it seems like, how can you make a decision on this whole disciplinary action when the people who are complaining have yet to be heard? It's always the same story. We come forward, we'll review your documents, we'll review your documents. How about reviewing what we have to say?
Let me ask you a question. Okay, you submitted another 15 pages or so to us, without counting them properly. Shall we hold off until we get a formal, more thorough submission from you, or...
Is the case going to be, is it going to remain open? Or is this Executive Session going to neatly package it up, tie it up with a bow and put it under the rug?
I can't answer that question.
Why am I not surprised?
We have to review the documentation. All right, so my question to you is, is this your complete packet, or should we hold off on any further discussions on this?
No, call that an introduction. Call that an introduction.
That wasn't my question. My question, shall I hold off on waiting for a complete submission before we take any other action? Because if I take action on this, then you can say, well, you forgot these other 15 pages.
Okay.
So what I'm suggesting is that you make it...
You want me to take these back?
You make it, no, y'all take them back, but I'm saying make it a complete submission, so that you're satisfied with the information that this Board has received and reviewed.
Well, for the record, what I'd like to put down in the record is that we, all the complainants, and I speak for all of us, we want equal time. We want an opportunity to state our cases, and we have not been given that.
Okay.
Mr. Show, I don't understand the basis for that complaint. You have provided us with the totality of the information, you and the other complainants have provided us with the totality of the information you have. It's up to the respondent to decide whether or not to invoke the respondent's right to face the accuser. It's not your right to challenge the respondent. It's not your right...
We're not looking to challenge. What I'm saying is, in plain English, meat and potatoes, this is one-sided. We present...
We have your side in writing.
Actually, we don't know, we not only have your side in writing, you also were allowed an opportunity at Citizens Forum to voice your opinion, and some of you had as much as 45 minutes at a time to speak. So we heard your side of the story. We then received written documentation from you. We reviewed that information.
Okay.
So it was not a one-sided review of information.
I have to disagree, because Citizens Forum is not a formal, that's not a formal hearing setting. I'm talking a formal hearing setting.
No, and actually, just for the record, just for the record, this is not a court of law either, neither are our discussions. What we are able to discuss as a Board are essentially employer-employee relationships, okay? And evaluate whether or not we feel that an employee acted appropriately or inappropriately, okay? That's the extent of the jurisdiction of this Board. If you feel that there's been some other, grander injustice, other than an employee who did or did not act appropriately, you need to pursue that through the court system. You know, there's criminal actions, then there's civil actions. And that's, you know, the most probably, I won't say expedient, but it's, you know, it sounds like that's the only, only end game for this, unfortunately, because all we can evaluate is the employer-employee aspects of this, and whether we feel that an employee either operated appropriately or inappropriately in their duties. Okay, so. All right, does anybody else want to speak at the business forum? All right, next item on the agenda is gravel pit, excuse me, renewal application for 155 Law Street, Permit Number 32. Mr. Hathaway, is Mr. Hathaway here? Yep. An update from staff on this?
Sure, this is a renewal application, and Mr. Chairman has suggested that we place it on as a scheduled appointment, not necessarily as a public hearing for tonight. There doesn't seem to be any issues by staff or from staff, but I leave it to the applicant if you want to describe your operations and where you're going with it.
Yes, Rick Hathaway. Obviously, with the economic conditions the way they are, nothing much has happened in the past year. Done some reclaiming of area in the gravel pit, and continuing to do that, depending on, again, the economic conditions. So basically, nothing much has happened since it was inspected last year, I think, by then Rachel Landry. So I did submit a updated plan to the Board.
Motion to grant the license renewal.
Second. Go ahead, Mike.
Any discussion necessary? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Consider application for license to store flammable and combustible liquids, flammable solids, or flammable gases submitted by Calvin Wiggers for 72 Commerce Drive. Just opened the public hearing. Oxbridge Board of Selectmen Public Hearing, Monday, November 24, 7:15 PM. Board of Selectmen's Office. Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing to consider an application for a license to store flammable and combustible liquids, flammable solids, or flammable gases submitted by Calvin Wiggers. Location of land, 72 Commerce Drive. Owner of land, Commerce Squared LLC. Total capacity of tanks, 26,000 gallons above ground. And, Strikers?
Good evening.
Any, just want to make, any commentary you'd like to share with us this evening?
Basically, I've been working in this town for 10 years. I was in the mill, with the mill fire, lost everything. I'm in the process of building a new warehouse. This license is a little broader than what I really do. I do not get involved with flammable liquids, or flammable solids, or flammable gases. What I do get involved with is what is called a Class 3B liquid, and it's more commonly referred to as mineral oil. And I distribute that to various plastic and rubber and adhesive manufacturers around New England.
It's been approved by the Fire Chief, which is a prerequisite, so...
Yeah.
Is this a public hearing?
It is.
Okay. We got to wait, see if any butters...
Well, we met the other day, just to talk through some of the mechanics of this. And the process, just for everyone's knowledge, is we grant the license, and then the Fire Chief grants the permit. The license stays with the property indefinitely. Okay? And then the permit is granted, you know, based upon conditions being met. Still working through some conditions for the permit, but the license, there's no reason not to grant the license. It gets, you know, one of the hurdles out of the way for the future steps, basically.
Basically, you're a wholesaler?
Yes.
Just wanted if there's anybody who wants to speak.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this?
Just for clarification, is this the new building that's under construction or is this the one that's actually operational right now in Commerce Drive?
It is not operational. It's in the process of being built.
The building is being built, okay.
Yes.
Like on the cul-de-sac?
Right, on the cul-de-sac, right. But there were two on the cul-de-sac, so I wasn't quite sure which one it was. Okay.
Motion to grant the license.
I have to close the hearing first, actually.
We're moving right along.
All right, go ahead, Peter.
Motion to grant the license.
All right, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good luck.
All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Excuse me. At the open public hearing, Oxbridge Board of Selectmen hold a public tax classification hearing at 7:15 PM, November 24th, in Selectmen's meeting room. Public invited for comment on the issue of tax levy percentages for fiscal year 2009 for residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Assessors will provide information and data relative to making a determination of the tax share of each taxable class. Selectmen will determine whether to shift the burden of taxation among the classes. So I see our tax collector here. I'm sorry, Assessor. May I call him?
Right, basically, this is our annual trip here to talk about whether you want to do one single tax rate or multiple tax rates. And basically, I recommend that we do a single tax rate as we have done in several years. I did give you a list of all the tax rates over the last several years and you'll notice that there's been no shift since 1983. In my memo, it mentions that if we did do a shift, it could reduce the residential burden, but it would drastically increase the commercial and industrial burden. Might make them very unhappy. So you have a listing of all the potential shifting possibilities there. And we would ask for your vote to the single rate.
Just as a matter of information for the public, you know, people here and might be watching from home, the distribution of the tax base in Oxbridge right now is 87% residential or property tax and 13% all others. So we're still, you know, despite efforts to bring more business to town, we still have a ways to go, I think, to have that be a bigger slice of the pie there, so...
This would help promote business too as well.
Right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Keshar.
Why is... Why are you asking for the rate to be 1153 when you talk about the range that can be chosen from 1151 to 1068?
That's only if we shift the rate.
That's only if you shift it.
The tax rate is a function of how much we spend. And the valuation. If the valuations go down, the tax rate has to go up.
Okay, so if we shifted at the lowest, what they're saying is the lowest would be 1068 in theory?
Yes, however, you'd have to shift the commercial rate up to $17.
Right, I understand that, right, right.
So basically, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
And my name is Peter and I don't have any money and I don't like being robbed.
That's right.
Does anybody named Paul here, they'd probably be in favor of that?
No, you have less than him.
Any other questions for David?
No.
We debated this a little bit over the years and we just feel we're not at the point yet where we can justify a split tax rate. You know, if we're trying to attract more business to town, you know, we need to keep that in mind.
I understand that. I guess my question is more to the, you know, this is so that we have X amount of dollars for the Y10 budget.
No, nine.
Nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, for nine.
This is your new tax rate. It's been on your new tax bills.
Okay, which is the current one we're in.
So people need to understand that when taxes are going up, it is to pay the bills that they authorized in the Springtown meeting. So if people don't want to ever see their taxes go up again, they've got to stop spending money at the Springtown meeting.
So we're not setting the rate to spend for next year, we're spending the rate that we're already spending.
We're portioning what you appropriated already, basically, amongst the...
We didn't appropriate the tongue appropriate.
Portioning it, yeah.
All right, okay.
But just because the town meeting appropriates money, it doesn't require that we spend all the money they appropriate.
I understand that.
I think the president once tried to sequester money and the courts decided that it wasn't good things.
The president doesn't have the same authority that we have.
So we should sequester some of the money?
I'm not talking about sequestering, but if we're giving $20 to go out and buy some oranges and we go to the market and find the oranges are all rotten, we're under no obligation to spend the money to buy rotten oranges. And if we see that we can buy them for less than was appropriated, we have an obligation, I think, to spend less. And just a reminder, we spend $1,000 each and every week more than we need to spend on town council.
We had a good example shown to us at town meeting where the, for instance, the senior center, they were appropriated $65,000 for a van and they didn't spend it just because they were appropriated it.
That happens all the time, yes. The departments are diligent with what they spend and they try to keep the lid on, yes.
That's what free cash comes from. It's not free.
Not free.
Taken from the pockets of the taxpayers, but not spent.
All right, I'm gonna ask Dave just to make just a two-minute commentary maybe on property evaluations. And, you know, and talk about, you know, individual valuations, but also in the context of the overall levy.
Assuming you go with 1153 rate, basically, you're not really setting that rate. That's the maximum that you can actually set in terms of a general tax rate. Because you spent to the limit, basically, at the town meeting. You know, you spend everything you can spend except for about $11,000. So, and that's why you'll see that in that form I have you assign that we're saying that you didn't spend at all. But basically, what we're looking for here is it's an average increase in... We had actually had an average drop in valuation of property in town. And basically, what's happening is we're offsetting that drop in valuation by an increase in the tax rate. So, you know, your property value may go down, but your tax amount of taxes you actually pay may go up.
They see that the value of their property is going down precipitously and their tax rates keep going on up.
Yeah, unless you keep spending more.
That's what people don't understand.
Yeah, well, they keep spending more.
We need to stop spending. We need to stop putting it into town meeting.
Actually, the budget increased, the amount we had to raise by taxation increased by $1.2 million this year, so... You have a question? I thought I said you hang up. Okay. All right, so anyway, the average, net average increase to the typical average single-family house would be about $151 a year with this new tax rate. And I have a chart of all sorts of different ranges. If you had a $200,000 house back in fiscal year 2008, it's probably worth about $186,000 now. But your tax will have gone from 2094 up to 2,147. So it's not going down.
I think if we save some, I think we save some money on our lawyer fees. A little there, a little there, a little everywhere will help the taxpayer out a little bit.
Perhaps.
Can you clarify why the, or explain, I guess, you show that the condo values dropped by 4.8%. Two and three family properties dropped by 7.4%, but multifamilies dropped by 3.4% and single families dropped by 5.3%. Is it just...
Based on market conditions. We actually examine the market condition for each of those different categories.
Okay, so two and three family properties dropped the greatest at 7.4%?
Yeah, yeah, on average, on average.
I mean, is there, I mean, because that's in some...
It's based on the market conditions. Based on what they sold for, basically.
And sometimes there aren't a lot of data points. You don't have a lot of sales in some of these categories.
Particularly on multifamilies, we don't have a lot.
And there may be special conditions that...
Well, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, I mean...
Other than change in value.
They cost more.
So therefore, all then to point... So in theory, then, if that was the case for two and three families, then all two and three families were adjusted by 7.4%?
No, I said that's the average.
Okay.
Some could have been adjusted more, some could have been adjusted less.
Okay.
And when we say average, that's exactly what we mean. Some are going to be a lot less, some are going to be a lot more.
Any other questions? No? Any ones here from the public? No? Okay, I'm gonna close the public commentary. Have a motion?
Motion, we set a single tax classification for the town of Oxbridge for fiscal year 09 with a tax rate of $11.53 per thousand.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, the Department of Revenue will have to approve the tax rate. They have not done that yet. We expect that maybe by Wednesday or so.
Now, you wanted to get signatures from us right now because you're gonna go process it, is that right?
Sometimes tonight, you don't have to do it immediately, but you can pass it around if you like. Get it done. Appreciate it.
What are you going to do, David, some year when we sit here and say no?
What's that?
What are you going to do some year when we decide to all say no to setting the tax rate?
Well, you don't have to, you don't have a choice.
Actually, that happened a few years ago.
You don't have a choice.
No, you have a choice of the classification. Now, you split it up. You don't have a choice of whether you set it or not.
David, just one thing.
Just one thing.
I see that was also a long year.
It was, obviously. You're held in contempt by Department of Revenue, I guess. All right, Town Manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do this very briefly. The Route 122 bridge detour over the Blackstone River south of the courthouse before Blackstone Street is supposed to be posted this week by Mass Highway for a reduced weight limit of seven tons. They experienced a delay in getting the posting of the detour route done and they had hoped to get it posted today. I haven't driven by to see if it was posted. And note if a key...
I guess I'm wondering if we can continue driving big trucks over it until it's posted, then obviously the posting is a meaningless effort, isn't it?
They say no. Pay-as-you-throw solid waste recycling program. The Board of Health has been working on a program in putting forth an RFP for services since town meeting had voted last May, or the May before, to establish an enterprise fund. Since that time, there's been some, actually improved components that they're working on with the assistance of Irene Condon and Kay Dedaher, who's a former Board of Health member who has stepped down because of some time conflicts. I had suggested that the Board of Health meet with the Board of Selectmen for two reasons. One, present what they're looking at for a program. If it's still a pay-as-you-throw bag with the hauler providing services and an annual registration with residents opting out, or if there would be a toter bin provided with people being able to put the plastic bags inside. So they're still working on that. A new model came out with the towns of Hubbardston, Princeton, and Templeton, and that's the HPT model. There's, in a similar situation to the town of Oxbridge, is that we don't provide any solid waste or recycling collection service. Each resident contracts and businesses contracts with a hauler that they choose on their own. The regional approach is very interesting if we can do that. And so there's a meeting coming up on December 9th where we're going to look at the possibility of a regional program with the assistance of the DEP. And then hopefully be able to report back to both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health at their meeting, at your meeting on December 22nd about the different offerings and so forth. Town hall hours, as you know, later on in your agenda, we have ratified and I'm asking the board to ratify the MOU that you've agreed to, an executive session, and the SEIU union has also agreed to. That provides for a four-day work week for town hall. We had suggested beginning it on Monday, December 15th. And we'll post the hours. But the hours are Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 7:30 AM until 5:00 PM. And Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM with the Friday closure. And only town hall would be closed on Friday. The thought is that we would close town hall beginning 5:00 PM on Thursday evening and not opening it up over the weekend until Monday morning. That will also require the board to consider a facility use policy if that's something that the board is willing to support. So we'll draft that policy for you, but at this time, we're looking to implement it on December 15th. Also, and Kim will provide you another memo on it, our card access system will hopefully be implemented also on December 15th. So that's where we will have a swipe card to unlock the front doors and be able to set who has access and at what hours. So that's still implementation. Kim had training today, but the actual semantics of the program still need to be.
Do you have a fingerprint reader or a corny?
It's a red on Skype, red on scan, yes.
I just have one thing on there, just to let the people out there know that the school offices will still be open on Fridays here. Am I correct?
No, we don't know for sure. We, I presented it a couple of months ago to the school admin and I know that the school business manager had talked with staff about closing for Friday, but I don't have a confirmation that they will remain open or not. We're still working on the semantics of that as well.
I'm just curious about it. I know that, that's what I say. Why would they be?
And if we have to do it, it might be something modified. It's just trying not to turn the whole heating system on upstairs for use of the restrooms. They're on a different system, but they would still require that upstairs. So we're still, the superintendent and I are still working on it.
Still talking about it?
Yeah. And we hope to have that resolved very soon. We have some vacancies on the boards and commissions. One I've outlined here is the cultural council. We essentially have two active members with the recent resignation of Suzanne Pignatello. She was the chairman and she had to unfortunately resign. This is important because there's some state grant funding that the cultural council, the local cultural council, is able to award. And that's, the grant is available until December 30th, 2008. So we're going to need a cultural commission to help award those grant funds. We've talked to Mass Cultural Council, Kylie Sullivan, who's given us a lot of information that I've included in my report. But what's interesting, she noted, is that grant recipients, former recipients and applicants can serve on the council as long as they complete the conflict of interest procedures. And that's important because those people actually have awareness of the program and it's only one component, the cultural council, but it's still, it's worth mentioning. So I have a couple of websites here that when we post this online, residents will be able to click on and find out exactly what a cultural council does. We also have an opening on the school building committee. John Higgins had asked me to report that and we'll post that as well on our vacancy page for boards and commissions. And then we'll have it posted on the bulletin board outside of the town clerk's office.
Actually, if I'm not mistaken, there might be two openings.
Yeah, one's Jim Haynes for sure. And then I know that there was another gentleman, I think...
Peter Schenover.
Peter, yeah, Schenover. So he was a member of the public. So there's two members of the public seats that are open. And they're about to gear up too, so it's an exciting time to be a member of the school building committee. The police department was a recipient of two grants. One was $11,400 for traffic enforcement and equipment grant. And then we received $13,734 for our COPS, our community policing grant program, which is about a 20% reduction as a result of the recent 9C cuts by the governor to the operating budget. And then an item here that I have listed is the Mass Historical Society grant. This is something that Selectmen Robertson had brought to our attention and I had circulated to staff. So here's some criteria for various program and funding opportunities. And I had sent this out also to the chairman of the historical commission. So details are here. And again, we'll post this on the website.
There's actually an additional category of cultural resources and preservation of cultural resources. And I responded back to Ms. Durdy and Mr. Skelly, asking specifically, does that allow for application for grant funding, the preservation of documentary cultural resources? I haven't had a response from them yet. I'm going to press ahead with it and force them to say no. And force them to identify alternate sources of grants for preserving some of the documents here in town hall and elsewhere. I think it's worth doing. I think it's worth doing. I do plan to go to the Milbury Workshop next month, or I'm sorry, in January. I'll give an opportunity to solicit some additional information from them.
Yeah, I want to note that the pre-application projects for the survey and planning grants are due by December 15th, so that was one of the impetus to get this on.
Yeah, that was in the email that they sent out announcing it.
The reason why I brought it forward is I was hoping that with the issues with the library, it would qualify under two, you know, because it is in the district. It's also a historic building. Has somebody stepped up to take the lead on that, Jill? Do you know? Is it going to be the library, or is it going to be the Historical Commission?
I don't know yet, but we forwarded to, I know for sure to the director of the library. And I know David had just spoken with the trustees about some of the maintenance issues, including the solar.
The skylight?
Skylight, yeah, the skylight.
Pointing, yeah, any of those.
Elevators.
I'm sorry?
I could speak to that just a second.
Sure.
Just a couple of quick points regarding the document preservation efforts. We have been costing that out. There, it's a two-step process. The first step would be to get all, most of the more, more often used historical records that the Town Clerk is right now wearing white gloves and thumbing through pages through. Getting them scanned and operational on a system within the clerk's office would cost approximately $35,000. The preservation efforts would cost approximately another $35,000. So we're looking to get all the documents that we're aware of at this point within Town Hall preserved and upgraded so that, so they're accessed through, through computerized records instead of anything else, would be seventy to $75,000. So that's, that's really the amount of funding that we would need if we were seeking solely grant funding to preserve all the documents. Regarding the library itself, we, I met with the Library Board of Trustees just before Town Meeting, the night before Town Meeting. At this point in time, they are going to be investigating the costs regarding replacing the skylight to stop the leaking within the building and replacing the flashing around the chimneys and some other areas up there. We feel those are the two big areas that we'll, that we need to address in order to stop the water intrusion in the building. Go on hand, our building inspector was on hand at that meeting as well. We anticipate that depending on what the cost factors come in at, that would be a valid use of the remain, of some of the remaining schooltown building maintenance monies. So they'll be getting back to us on that. Thank you.
You know, also on the, on the document issue, the archivist that's been working in Northbridge, cataloging and indexing their records and uploading the finding aids into the OCLC, has just completed that project, and he's due to make a report to the Massachusetts, to the, to the Northbridge Historical Commission, I think, in mid-December. So I was going to ask David if he wanted to go along, David, Joe Kaplan, if he wanted to go along to that one, to get a sense of, you know, what have they accomplished in Northbridge? And, you know, to try to get a sense of, in total, what did it cost to hire this guy to come in? I know he was getting thirty dollars an hour for four hours a week, so he's making a hundred and twenty a week just doing the Northbridge records. And he was doing a couple of other towns as well.
What specifically was he doing, Mike? Was he just, was he archiving what they were?
Yeah, it was, it was a question of going through and identifying what existed there and creating a finding aid and an index. The OCLC is the Library of Congress Master Index online of materials. So once an item is registered there, a scholar anywhere in the world can identify that there is a particular document, identify through OCLC that there is a particular document in Northbridge that might be of interest to whatever it is that they're working on. And we do the same thing with the Oxbridge documents as well. I mean, there is a good thick ledger of bits and pieces of colonial and revolutionary war documents that are still in the Town Clerk's office right now. And some of that stuff is absolutely fascinating to read through. It would be a good one, I think, to scan and put online, just so you don't have folks, you know, going through, going through the books. But it also needs to be, you know, cataloged and indexed and uploaded to OCLC. And those particular procedures can be done within the context of the archivist's work order. I need to find out exactly how many hours it took him to do the collections in Northbridge.
Yeah, we got a copy to report your thing?
Yeah.
A quick question for Jill. You note here that Oxbridge is not a CLG-certified local government, and as a result, we're not eligible for certain grants. What is involved with becoming certified, and what other benefits does it get us other than, you know, grant accessibility?
I didn't look too deeply into it, but what appeared to be is a pretty complicated process, but I'll certainly pull, pull that. There's not enough time to get it done for this grant cycle, but it's certainly something we can put on the burner for the next.
I mean, if it's a huge effort and the benefits are minimal, no sense in doing it. But if it opens the door to some other, you know, funding opportunities, then we should explore it then. Okay? All right, any other questions?
Yeah. The, the regionalization or the townwide trash pickup they want to talk about. Rather than have them, the Board of Health and whoever wants to come, come to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, talk about it. I'd like to have first an outline of what it is they want to do, the parameters, so we can read it, understand it, and then we can get together with the meeting. However, there are two ways it's talked about. A townwide system where people, residents are automatically included in this plan unless they take positive action to say, "I don't want it."
About, right.
I would rather have it the other way around. So people who want to do it will say, "Yes, I want to do it." So, you know, that's my preference on this thing.
The way some of this has been explained, in order for the householder to realize a cost savings in it, it really requires a certain amount of social engineering. You have to alter your purchasing patterns to buy things that are packaged in a way that it's inexpensive to put into the trash or more amenable to, more amenable to recycling. And if you don't change your purchasing patterns and you get into this program, it's going to cost you a tremendous amount of money, over and above, you know, what you're now spending.
And keep in mind on all these things, anytime there's a so-called service provided by the town, then we have to pay the mandated wages on all the people involved in those things, which are double and triple actual real wages earned by real people. So when you look at it carefully, it's hard for me to understand how they're going to do anything that's going to be more efficient for the people who are going to pay the bill.
I'd be interested to know why, what was the intent to look at the program in the first place? Was it from an economic cost-saving standpoint, or was it from a green standpoint?
Actually, both. Actually, both. I mean, the way it's presented is both. And having driven through some towns that are participating in these programs, I was surprised at the level of participation. Every house you drove by almost had the special colored bags that you had to buy, or whatever the case may be, which really surprised me that it was. So I don't know what the numbers are specifically, you know, but for that large percentage of people that I witnessed, just anecdotally at least, to have bought in, I'm assuming people were making like the right financial decisions for themselves as well. So I don't know. Jury's still out, I think.
It's always presented as environmentally sound, or green, or schmene, or something. But the reality is, every human organization in the world always wants to grow. Every organization. That's natural. So Board of Health wants to be in charge of this, and this, and this, and this, and this. And that's the actual motivation. The stated motivation, of course, is always something more pleasing to the ear. I'm not opposed to the idea, but I look at it as a hard-nosed businessman. I want to make sure that people have their rights preserved and that there actually will be a savings. And a lot of times, we have these recycling things, they pick up the papers and so forth. But in the end, they go in the trash at the recycling center because there's no market at that time. So what people think they're doing to be green may turn out to be purple instead.
And just one last word on that is that the town will issue an RFP, and so we'll find out what the responses from the haulers, exactly what it's going to cost. And if it's not beneficial, or there's, the cost benefit analysis doesn't prove, then we won't go forward, you won't go forward with this, so that's something.
Couldn't you put a little thing on the survey, see how many people out there are interested to start with?
Yeah, leave that to the Board of Health, but they, they wanted to do a lot of outreach. So Kay Dedaher had a letter that she was going to send out, but we thought the first thing to do is confirm with the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen that this is what you want to do and proceed from there. So I think it's often, pretty much come to be after December 9th, we'll have a better idea. And then at the joint meeting, we can move from there and do a survey.
It scares me a little.
Well, and I understand, but also, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind, my mind is, I mean, to do a survey of everybody in town, unless there's a way that we can do it electronically, an online survey, you know, you know, some type of mailing.
Not everyone's online yet.
Sometimes do non-mining referendums.
But the cost to send paper to every house.
What's the survey going to say? Am I interested? I don't know. Tell me how much it's going to cost. So forget the survey.
That's the challenge, is.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the reason that we have ninety people in a room built for forty here.
They need my rating for nine and a half.
Yeah. Winner made this policy review. Okay. I'm quite sure where to start, but we've heard from many, many of you.
There are about twenty people out in the hallway waiting to come in. Can we call them in for this conversation?
Good idea.
So we all care at one time?
Yeah, I mean, there's some room over here. If some folks who are standing now would slide over here and let the people out in the hall come in, that would be great.
There's plenty of room in here. Come on in.
Come in.
Please come in.
You don't have to speak. Just listen.
Okay. Okay. All right. Just a bit of background, and I'm sure everyone is fully aware of where we are. But it was, I believe, last summer, not this past summer, last summer, that former DPW Superintendent Pombara brought to us a list of private ways that DPW had been plowing or that have not yet been plowed but are in some, some stage of the acceptance process. And asked us to weigh in on, on the policy as to whether or not the town should continue to plow the private ways. At that point, we, this was, I think, you know, late last summer. Didn't feel we could get something done in time for the fall. So, so the Director of Planning was working on this, you know, quite a bit through the spring. And then in the spring, we took a look at the policy and decided that just factoring everything into consideration, the liability exposure to the town, the town's obligations relative to private ways, budgetary constraints, all those types of things, to enact a policy that unfortunately you all were just notified of formally within the last several weeks. And, you know, essence of that policy was to no longer plow private ways unless, except for in case of emergency. Also, the policy that we adopted did allow us to bill the developers, where a developer is, is in place still for, you know, any, any town resources that were expended on, on plowing the private ways. Unfortunately, and Town Manager has, has shared this with me, prior attempts at doing this with other towns have apparently gone much more smoothly than, than where we are today. And, and I know when we took action on this in, in May and June timeframe, really, I thought we would have a lot more roads accepted at this November Town Meeting than we actually did. So it puts us, you know, in a tough situation, and it puts all of you in an even tougher situation when you get a letter in the mail in November saying, "Oh, by the way, the town has been, you know, plowing a street, but is not going to do so anymore. Good luck." And, and believe me, you know, that was not, not the intent. And clearly, had past history, you know, been a good predictor of future performance, we would have had a lot more developers, you know, join with us and work on acceptances and, and plowing and everything else, and some have. And I'm not, I'm not disparaging the developers. But none of it is, we are where we are right now. Probably, you know, a week away from a snowstorm or less. And a number of you are on streets that the town has plowed in the past. And either you don't have a developer, or the developer has not indicated a willingness to pick up responsibility for, for plowing their property. So what I'd like to have the board to do tonight is to, you know, take a look at, at the policy that we adopted. And I wanted to make a couple of recommendations, and then I'll, I'll ask maybe Jill just to give us update with, with some thoughts, you know, as well. But here's where I'd like to steer this. The town accepted a state statute that allows us to plow private ways. Now, usually, the second part of action that happens when you do that is you fund it. And, and what we've not done is break out snow plowing into two separate line items as, as would be better practice. You typically would see a line item that says, you know, road maintenance or plowing for public ways, the road maintenance for private ways, okay? We've never funded the private way separately. It's all kind of been one big number there. So what I'd like to ask the board to consider this evening, and then I'll open up a discussion from, from the board, and I'll invite the Town Manager to kind of weigh in as well, is to take a look at a couple of things. First, to recognize the fact that we're not going to add any streets to the list. If you live on a private way that the town had not previously plowed, we're not, we're not going to add any. I mean, our objective is to get these roads accepted, have them no longer be private ways, and get out of the business of plowing private ways. So I'm going to ask the board to, you know, to enforce the policy that says we're not going to add any new streets. I'll also ask the board, though, to consider whether, you know, we should lift the ban for a year to next October 15th. It's stated to go to, you know, this October, it's supposed to go into effect October 15th of this year. I asked the board to consider lifting that until October 15th of next year, okay? Furthermore, I'd like to see us amend the policy. Right now, the policy says that we can only bill developers in case of emergency snow removal. Okay, it's in paragraph eight of the, of the policy. It says, "On an annual basis, Board of Selectmen shall set a rate for reimbursement in the event that the town has to provide emergency service to a subdivision during a storm event because of a lack of adequate service by the developer owner." I'm going to ask the board to consider just striking the word "emergency" service there. So it's not just in the case of emergency, in the case where the builder just has, has, for whatever reason, not stepped up to the plate to do the plowing. This will at least allow us to have a mechanism to invoice the developers where a developer exists. And, and then the last thing is, I'll invite, actually, Selectman Batasky to talk a little bit about liability. He'd raised some questions about liability. And what I'd like to see us do, though, is, first of all, take a look at, at delaying the effective date until next October 15th, to give as many of you as much time as possible to work collaboratively with, with the town and your builders to get your roads accepted at next Town Meeting. All right, second piece of that is, I am going to recommend that for this budget cycle that we're jumping into right now for next fiscal year, that we break these out into two separate line items, okay? And that way, it no longer becomes, you know, a decision of these five people as to whether or not private ways get, get plowed, you know, by the town. It's, it's part of Town Meeting action, you know, and I think it's fairly reasonable. And I think it's fairly reasonable and fairly simple for someone who lives on a private way that had been plowed and, you know, is in that kind of limbo state to convince Town Meeting to appropriate money to continue to provide that service. But I think the town as a whole should weigh in on that and not just five people at this table. And so I am going to suggest that moving forward, that we do break the line and the budget items out. And by gathering data this winter through any action that we do take, if that's the direction the Board goes, we'll have a real number to plug in to the line item come the spring budget. And recognizing also that snow removal is one of the few budget line items that a town is allowed to overspend because it's, you know, it's impossible to predict what you're needing any given year on an annual basis, basically. You know, we do some transfers to make that whole. So, I mean, that's about it as far as what I wanted to address. I would ask the Town Manager to weigh in with, you know, kind of an update on things. I know, you know, obviously, we had some roads accepted at Town Meeting. And a fundamental question I have is, although, you know, technically, they were accepted at Town Meeting, it's not yet been approved by the Attorney General. So are they still a private way officially until, you know, we get confirmation of Town Meeting action? Those types of things. But even if that, you know, is the case, you know, is it safe to consider them a public way now? Not a private way? Those types of things. But can you just give us an update from your perspective?
In regards to the Town Meeting vote, the towns become public once the deeds are recorded. So we talked about it as a Board, is that if the roads were accepted and there wasn't any issues such as dangerous conditions for the town plows or that the covers were covered up, that we would anticipate that the DPW, and we have Bob Harris, our Highway Manager here, that we would continue to plow. I have in your packet a listing of all the roads that were included in the policy. And I just want to note, just to start the conversation off, which roads we have on our listing that we have noted has never been plowed by the town and it's not our intention to plow these roads moving forward. So I'll start out with Arbor Road, Cassie Lane, I'm sorry, it's Cassie, C-A-S-S-I-E Lane, Commerce Drive Extension, Deerview Lane, Duran Place, Forest Lane, Foxwood Lane, Gervais Way, Glenn Street, Julia Drive, Lee Street, Long Meadow Road, Murphy's Way, Rose Lane, Story Lane, Waterman Way, and Wildlife Drive. All of those are noted on my listing. You don't have any of yours. I just got it today as active subdivisions. Notably, Story Lane has some road conditions that there's no way our town could actually plow. And that's consistent with our subdivision rules and regulations. The streets that the town has plowed as of last year, I'll read those off. And I think that's what Mr. Chairman is saying about continuing to plow them for one more season. That's Anthony's Way, Buttermilk Way, Cold Spring Drive, Connor Pass, Cotton Mill Way, Crown Shield Avenue, Dunne Cove Road, Easy Street, Gary Lane, Jackamo Way, Casey Court, Jody Circle, Serenity Drive, Spinning Well Drive. And I do want to note, because we did get a lot of calls from residents on Casey Court and Jody Circle and Gary Lane. And there is, this is an active subdivision and there's been contact with the developer. And many of you had called and I referred you to the Engineering Office. Just to let you know that the developer's working to get those roads to an acceptable condition so that they can be accepted by the town. Unless you have any questions of Bob, he's standing right there with his file in his hand.
And we have, we have a couple that have been plowed by the town that don't have construction developers to plow them. So I don't think they have a whole lot of choice. Anthony's Way, Jackamo. And I do believe, is it Casey Court and Jody Circle?
Casey and Jody do have.
They're all set, okay.
But again, this is part of the listing of the Board tonight deciding if you want to continue plowing them for another season regardless if there's an active subdivision or not for the case of Anthony's Way and Jackamo.
I mean, I think there's some things we need to do first.
Actually, the other item, and I want everyone to understand this, first of all, is of great concern to the town is liability exposure. Okay? The town is somewhat protected as far as limits of liability when plowing public ways. And some of those same limitations do not exist relative to plowing private ways. So recognizing that a policy going forward, or a strategy going forward, rather, not a policy, has got to be, get as many of these roads accepted as quickly as possible. And it doesn't mean look the other way and just blindly rubber stamp and accept every road. It's find a way to get them finished and get them accepted and recorded. Second part of that is, we also then start getting state funding once the roads are accepted. So, you know, the highway funds are calculated based on, you know, linear mile of road in your town. So, you know, it's somewhat of a win-win. And what we're going to need really is a partnership with every one of you in this room. To, you know, the phone calls that you made to us, please make those same phone calls to your developer if you haven't already. Where you don't have a developer, you know, work with. We're going to need to come up with a creative solution there. And I don't have one tonight, other than I hopefully, you know, we can get to a point where we'll at least get you through this winter and buy some time to come up with a solution here. But I really would encourage everyone to become a kind of an active part of the solution here. We need your help, you know? And we can all take a look back and say, well, the town did this wrong or this right or the developer did this wrong or this right. It's not about, you know, who shot Johnny at this point. It's about, you know, right now, we've got 31 roads listed that are private ways that are in some various state of flux right now. We need to get this list down to a handful by this time next year and then down to none, you know, the following year. And that's what we need your help on. But of utmost, you know, concern to the town, though, is the liability issue. And Selectman Potasky had raised, I think, a very valid question and suggestion. And so I'll turn it over to Mike to kind of talk about that.
Yeah, in looking at the liability issue where the normal caps that we have when we're plowing accepted roads might not apply on private roads, it opens the town to a certain amount of exposure. We've got a four-page memo from Town Council laying out the pros and cons of the issue for the town. And he ends with the recommendation that wherever possible, or whenever possible, the town should seek release or waiver of liability from the owners of private ways or the abutting parcel owners on accepted, unaccepted subdivision ways for which the town agrees to provide discretionary snow and ice removal service. My sense of that, when I was sort of mulling it over and devising the communication with Town Council, is that we ask the assessor to come up with a good list of all the abutting homeowners on these ways that you're, we're considering to go in and ask you to come in and sign a release or waiver of claims against the town for any liability or tortuous action that might occur during the snow removal. Town Council has come up with a form. We would ask the assessor to simply fill in or identify for us who it is that needs to come in and sign the waiver. My initial thought on it was that any street that did not have 100% participation in the waiver wouldn't get plowed. I was told that might be a bit excessive. We might not be able to even locate 100% of the parcel owners out there. So we would have to find, you know, some percentage of homeowners that would be willing to work with us and say, okay, we want you to come on our property or on our developer's property.
No, 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 it's.
We would be liable if we hit your car without plow.
So we're asking you to.
We have, we have been exposed.
One second, let Mike finish, please.
We have been exposed to an excessive level of liability unknowingly. We now know that the town, hey, you people raised the issue. But it doesn't, it doesn't remove us from liability. And therefore. It is, it is.
Just wait one second.
Our decision is what percentage of the abutters would need to sign.
Two people do it on the street and another two don't. They won't. Then you're not going to, still not going to do the street?
What's your liability if there's a fire up there?
If there's an emergency, there is plowing.
And now you don't have anything in place for your own, not the street. And now, if there's a fire that's been did up there.
No, if there's an emergency, the truck.
From day one, first of all, let me get that, let me set that record straight. From day one, this policy has always said, all right, even if it stands as it sits right now, that in the case of emergency, regardless of that, the streets are going to plow. Recognize that, sir, please.
You're going to get a plow up there after it's been snowed and melted and frozen and refrozen and for three weeks and get the snow out of the way before the allergic reaction child gets out of the neighborhood and gets to a medical facility? It's not going to happen. And you're not going to be liable?
Excuse me. I beg. I'm not a lawyer, but if we sign liability, would it be any less liable than if it was a public way? In other words, are we signing our rights to have the same rights as a public way if something happened on the public way? So it's basically, you're just saying we're a private road and we accept liability.
Similar to a public way.
As similar a public way. That's not, I don't think that's a problem. I don't see why that would be a problem.
Yeah, but the one challenge, the biggest challenge is this, you're jumping into liability issues when you're still trying to deal with the primary issue. And that is developers have a responsibility to that development. And that's also on your, that's part of the responsibility. Make sure that, to make sure that that happens. And now you've jumped over that aspect of, and now you're going to ask us to bear the burden of a liability, which is a little unfair to us. We really need to deal with that primary issue. Because once we deal with that primary issue, there's no need to talk about who's going to have liability. Because if you're a public way, I mean, accepted road, it was part of the responsibility from the beginning.
Sure, but we can't wave a wand and accept the roads tomorrow, unfortunately.
We're not asking you to wave a wand. We're not going to do that. There's a method that needs to be adhered to. The developers agree to adhere to certain rules and regulations. You guys are here to enforce that. We're asking you to do that.
We're asking you to plow the road and build the contractor to enforce the fact that they have an obligation. You guys have an obligation to us too. Everybody in this town has certain things that they expect. And one is to be safe. And you leave us with a big fault in our safety. You can't get in that road. You're not going to be able to get a plow up there if there's an emergency pot. It needs to be plowed as it comes down to, in order to get proper access in there. Now, we feel that if you make the rules in a certain way to address that issue in the first place, we wouldn't be here. The contractors now tell us they won't plow. You're telling us you won't plow. Then I think the town has an obligation to say, you will not plow? Okay, we're going to plow, but you're going to pay the bill for it. You're an active contractor. If not, then there is the fault of finishing the development. Take the bond, finish the road and accept the road as a public way instead of us sitting here having to fight for the same thing that everybody else in this town gets, snow removal.
Yeah, I don't think we're just arena on anything other than.
You're saying all this liability stuff.
And it's a very, it's a very relation, though.
We're not going to give you the opportunity. We're affording you the same situation we do any other public road. They have a liability cap. If something happens, they have a cap. We're asking you to sign a liability statement that you will be capped at the same level as any other public road.
No, 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 no. Listen to what, listen to what you're saying. You want your road to be plowed. We want to plow your road. We have an obligation to the other 11,000 people in this town not to stick them with a liability. So we're going to take care of you and ignore the.
And then the developer should be signing that. He owns the road.
We're doing the plowing.
If you were, if you were to buy, if you buy a house on Main Street down here, you're telling me that there's no liability for snow plowers down that street?
There is, but there's a limit to it. There's a limit under the law.
That's the difference, though, than if you say, sign off our liability issues.
And we don't know the road either. No, I just, just remind you how.
So basically, what you're saying is if we sign the liability waivers, we would be capped at what's a $10,000. Whatever the limit is that people on public roads are capped at.
We're asking you to play by the same rules as everybody else who's getting their streets plowed by the town. We're trying to be reasonable here. I mean, and just for the record, I mean, case law indicates that the fact that we have plowed roads that were not our property in the past, there's no legal obligation to continue to do that, okay? We want to, we want to work with you on this. Trust, I mean, we want to work with you on this, okay? Case law will back us up to the end of the day that we don't need to plow the roads. We want to. All we want to do is limit our, the town's liability when plowing your road, which is not accepted, to the same liability when they're plowing my road that is accepted. Okay, it's that simple. We're just asking for a partnership here.
Does the form say that that way?
If it doesn't, we'll, we'll get language in there that, you know, we can be, all be comfortable with. We just want everyone to be playing by the same rules.
I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's reasonable and perfect for you to ask the residents of the neighborhood that those residents, when they moved there, have no idea what the liability, the liability issues are not.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to actually come up to the microphone. Anybody that wants to speak, please come up to the mic, just so people at home can hear you and as well. Could you please identify yourself, too?
I'm Dr. Darnell Moore. I live at 145 Casey Court. When it comes to the issue of equitability and responsibility, you know, you're asking the residents who, when they moved into the development, didn't have any idea what the circumstances were relative to the roads because we just naturally assume that the roads are there and the responsibility of the town to take care of. We just do that. Now, you're asking us to take on a burden that we don't know what the cost of that burden's going to be around liability. It's not, it's not, it's not part of our language. It's not part of our everyday life to examine those features. But what we're, what we're asking is, don't ask us to take on a liability that we don't have any idea what that's going to mean to us in the bottom line of our paychecks every day. But what about dealing with the front end of, the front end of it? Where we have a developer who isn't being responsible and we have a board that is here to make sure that they're responsible? We would ask that be done first before you ask us to take on any liability.
I think they have to happen in tandem. I respectfully disagree with you on that one because, you know, first of all, when you do buy a home, whether you're aware or not that it was on a private way, it's, I mean, I'm sure that was somewhere in the paperwork. You know, and I don't say that flippantly. I mean, I, you know, I'm real anal about those types of things. When I, you know, did my paperwork, I was, wanted to be very clear on that. But it's neither here nor there. We can't just, I think, solve half the equation here and just, and just put the blinders on and say that there's no additional liability for the town. We're not asking you to assume liability, okay? What we're asking you to do is just play by the same rules as everyone who lives on a public way has relative to liability.
What are those rules?
It's essentially, it limits the liability of the town to a reasonable level. That, you know, essentially in line with, you know, what our insurer will allow us to do.
You know, I think I could stand in here for the next few hours and listen to the debate, but I certainly still am going to leave looking at the Board holding the responsibility and being responsible to us, the citizens, and to get the developers to do what they agreed to do in the beginning.
And I think that's my opening comments, where we want to get as many roads dedicated as possible. And, you know, had this gone, I think, the way we had envisioned it would go back in May and based on, in the Town Manager's experience, having been through this, you know, twice before with other communities and it's gone much more smoothly than it has here. You know, shame on us for being in this point right now, but we are where we are and we're trying to bring a solution to the table here. And I think we're trying to be as fair as possible. And to echo Selectman Potasky's comments, we're very sensitive to the needs of everybody in this room and everybody else on your streets who didn't come down tonight. But we also have an obligation to the other 11,000 or 10,000 odd people in this town relative to liability.
Let's, let's be clear. Certainly, there is a responsibility across the Board, and I'm not going to deny that. But essentially, you're asking us in the 11th hour to make a decision on taking on ownership of liability, which is really something. something.
No, 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 we're not asking you. What we're saying is, is that if something happens, if, if a plow truck hit a private car on a public way while it was plowing that, the, the owner of that vehicle would be capped in how much they could come back and sue the town for that damage that occurred. On a private way, that may not be capped. And what we're asking you to do is sign a paper that says you are going to basically play by the rules as if you're a public way. We're not gonna allow you any more chance in getting any more money of a suit than you would if that was already a private, I mean, a public way. You understand what I'm saying?
That's what I mean, you said you wanted us to wave a wand.
That is what you said originally. You said you wanted us to wave.
It was a mistake.
That's right.
It's a word here. So will it be the same, written the same as anyone else in this town?
That's right.
If it's a public way, the cap is 200?
That's right.
250,000?
Because you're asking us.
Will it be the same as a public way?
That's right, because you'd be asking.
Yes.
Can I ask everybody to just be quiet just for a second? We just got the policy, and Selectman Bagnesarian does wanna speak, I, I wanna, I wanna give him a chance to speak. We just got the policy, or, or, uh, Town Council's opinion late this afternoon with, with the proposed, uh, you know, waiver of claims language in it. Uh, we've not had a chance to, to really, you know, go with the fine-tooth comb. The intent was to put us all on a level playing field, okay? If, if this particular language does not do that, I'm certainly, you know, comfortable in, in getting to language that does do that. And, and again, that is the intent here, is, is to recognize your needs, along with the needs of the other 11,000 people in this town who, you know, would be sharing in that liability pool, so to speak. Okay? And, and so, it's all we're trying to get to, is, is, you know, we're trying to get to yes, here, is, is what it comes down to.
Very well. I, I think that needs to be, uh, clearly stated, then.
Yeah.
Because it's not at this point.
Oh, that's fine. Peter?
No, I think everyone gets it now. You're not accepting any more liabilities. If people who live on public streets, if a town vehicle causes damage, there is statutorily a limit as to the liability of a town. What I'll be asking you to do is accept those same limits, just as you would without even knowing it if you were on an accepted street. That's all, it's not a big deal.
It's very fair as far as I'm concerned.
Is that gonna be signed before the snow falls, before you plow the road?
Well, I mean, our objective would be to, you know, to nail this down, you know, tomorrow with, as far as language is concerned, and, and, and get it out immediately.
So that's great, so then my other question was, which is fine, does that mean you had a, an issue of certain amount of people signing it before the roads were plowed? My own thing is, I'm happy to sign if it makes sense, but I just don't wanna be fault on its way.
Yeah, right, no, and, and.
My, my view would be, get it going. If it snows, we're gonna plow it, even if we don't have all the signatures. But if time goes on and we don't have the signatures, we may reconsider for that particular street.
And, and we'll have, and we'll also have a very different conversation next year.
Well, and I think that honestly, I mean, for that reason, I mean, I know that people probably don't wanna hear deadlines, but we need, we would need to implement something for this, if it's, we have to have all the signatures within 30 days.
Sorry, can I ask everybody to keep it down while, well, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, I understand that it could start snowing in the next couple of days, but we can't let this linger on and go, "Well, you know, hey, we're gonna start", and then not get all the signatures. You know, it comes in the mail or however, we're gonna pass it out, and they go, "Oh, well, they're already plowing our roads, I don't need to worry about this." I think that it needs to, we need to put a deadline on this. If we don't have all the signatures back within 30 days, then we will stop plowing the road.
That's fine, but it can't be forever.
That's what I'm saying, right, it can't, right, we, you know.
Can you do it by the fall? If we do not hear from you within 30 days, we're assuming that you take responsibility.
No, no, we cannot.
Yeah, unfortunately. Sorry, Scott?
First, I wanna disclose that I live on a private way, just so everybody understands that, I'm not looking for any special favors here. But I think I can encapsulate a lot of what you folks said too, and I was just talking to one of the persons, I didn't mean to blurt out with him right away, but an hour ago, ladies and gentlemen, we weren't gonna get our roads plowed if it snowed tonight. Selectmen are willing to go, to a degree with us, to help us get to the point where our roads can become close to being accepted. Meegan, I know for a fact, has been working with some very active individuals in the particular development that I live in to get the road accepted. And some of the things that are gonna potentially need to happen in the spring are some bonds taken and such like that. But we have to give these individuals a chance, because I know better than anyone else how the legal system works. It doesn't happen overnight. We've got an opportunity here to just sign the liability. All that basically says is if the plow digs up your front lawn, you can't sue them for a million dollars, you can only get so much back. For crying out loud, we can plant grass seed if they knock our lawn over. If they knock over our mailbox, we can put up a mailbox. The alternative is paying a heck of a lot more money to have our roads plowed. Let's take advantage of this opportunity, work with them. I know the town planner is already working diligently with the particular development that I'm in to try and make sure that by next year we can get it developed. And Kevin's right, it's a win-win for everybody. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Hi, Nancy Lyle, Buttermilk Way. I, I, I appreciate the fact that some of these developments still have surety and bonds held on their roads, but it's my understanding that our development, all the money's already been given back, even though the roads have not been completed. So what I wanna know is, the planning board, in my opinion, overstepped their bounds by giving all money back before it was an accepted road. So what recourse do we have with a builder who says he's not even planning on, he may not even be able to finish our roads? So where do we go? We can't touch the road 'cause we don't own it, his name is on the deed. And by the way, when I bought my house, we were the first one on the street, and it said nothing about being a private way. To me, there's three designations, it's a public way, it's an unaccepted street, and it's a private way. We're caught in the middle. And I think that's where a lot of our frustration, I know it's certainly my frustration where that comes from, is because I never would've bought on a private way. I lived for 12 years in Canton on a private way, and having to shovel that street every winter, every snowstorm, is not fun. We never would've bought that house if that was ever a consideration.
You have, you have recourse to the developer.
He has, he's, from what I understand, Huttnack's out of business. It doesn't even exist anymore as a corporation. That's what I've been told, maybe it's incorrect.
Well.
So if he doesn't exist, but he, his name is on the deed for that street, we couldn't even if we collectively wanted to pay for a snowplow to come down to plow, because it's not our property to say so. So where do we go from there? One thing I would like to say about this liability issue is I would appreciate a letter to go into all the abutters, as I feel personally, it should've happened when you were talking about the policy that affected so many people. If you notify people in advance, we could've come in the beginning, had input into the policy, taken steps in May and June to meet, if they have, if they know who the developers are, to try and get it accepted. Another point I'd like to make is that in the past several years, anyway, you've only been accepting streets in the fall. At that point, it's too late. As we saw last week at town meeting, you can't tell people in November that they're not gonna get plowed this week 'cause we forgot to cross a T or dot an I. You gotta give us time to work with people. So I would strongly recommend that you change what has been the policy, anyway, of the Board of Selectmen, and put street acceptances on the Springtown warrant, so those of us who are close, who might have an opportunity to get the roads ready for acceptance in the spring, have that chance. And if we don't get accepted by the town, it still gives us several months till November to then get accepted at that point in time. You gotta give us time to do things.
Well, yeah, and, just let me make, uh, two comments in response there, actually. First, um, being relative to town meeting, yeah, absolutely. Uh, I, you know, the Springtown meeting, you know, by charter and everything else, is supposed to be focused on, on the budget, but, you know, I, we still have latitude at this table to, to put other articles on there a- as appropriate, but, I mean, the intent and, and the focus really should be on, you know, budget-related items.
Agreed.
You know, but, I, you know, and, and also, there'll probably be another, we always have more than just two town meetings a year, anyway.
Yeah, the last couple years is lined in two.
I, I don't wanna have a special time meeting just to do street acceptances, however, if we have another special time meeting for whatever reason, you know, anything else that's ready at that point, I think would make sense to do. Relative to, to the bond issue, that's, that's a little bit, uh, you know, a little broader of a question, um, because it's pretty complex. Something I learned in this whole discovery process over the past, you know, several weeks, is that it's not a one, one-to-one correlation between the release of the bond and the road immediately being ready for acceptance, okay? I, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I, I don't, you know, that's not my space, um, but I, I was told that, that that is not indeed, you know, a one-to-one correlation there, that, that, you know, the town is obligated to release bond money once certain criteria is met, and not all those criteria being met means that it's immediately ready to be accepted.
Is that state-defined criteria or local?
I, I would really actually direct those types of questions to Megan Dupree.
Because it seems to me that if it's something that we can tighten up at the local level, I would strongly urge her and her team to.
Oh, yeah.
Tighten up our bylaws so that it's, not all funds are released back to the developer until it is accepted by the town.
And the other point I wanna make, too, is, this list of streets should only get shorter. You know, I, I think we've got the, the processes in place now that we're not gonna end up with more streets in this limbo state.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but, you know, I, you know, I'll, I'll confess for all the sins of the past, if, if, if that makes everybody feel better, but what we're really trying to do is say, you know, moving forward, not gonna have any new streets coming onto this list, and we're gonna work systematically to get all the streets that, that are on this list off the list. So I, I think we're saying the same things, Nancy, I mean, I, you know, we're, and, and relative to the notification, again, I, I think we just envisioned a lot better response. You know, uh, and, you know, if we could turn back the clocks to May, we probably would've sent notices out to all the abutters, along with the developers, and say, "Please join with us in working with your developer, we have a developer." And I recognize for a lot of people in this room, they don't even have a developer.
And by the way, Dudley did defer their decision for a year because they had it uproar there. I Googled "street acceptances" and Dudley popped up.
Oh, really?
So it's not, we're not unprecedented in, in delaying a policy implementation due to the timing of the announcement. Thank you.
If, if I could just make a, a comment, and it's, it's not one to be sarcastic. We had a number of discussions on this in the spring as we were going into devising this particular policy document, and we really had no feedback from the public until after the policy was, well, yes, Mark, you were often here, but we, we didn't have.
But you were one of the selectmen, though, too, Mark, so, so you had to be here.
So, you know, people, not just in this room, but people at large in town that are watching this, or who may watch our meeting subsequently, when, when they're run on the cable channel, on tape, need to pay attention to what we're doing at this board, and if we're doing something that's really strange and really gonna have an adverse impact on people, people need to let us know, before we go too far down the line.
But it would be nice to be communicated with in different forms of fashion, but that's the case, because, you know, all of this, all this information differently than if you make that comment, I think it's just a change.
It's gonna have such an, it's gonna have an impact, and certainly.
We, we, we did not expect this issue to have the impact, because experience of the professionals said it should not have had a, a lot of consternation.
Oh, it seems like we've come to an agreement, and now we're back to 23.
My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be that, um, I'd like to see Section 8. Don't know, you had rec, let me get back for a second. You had recommended that we ban the policy. I, I would like to use, no, I would like to use language that allows the policy to be in effect so that Section 8 can still be enforced this year, for the developers who have chosen not to plow, although they are still responsible, 'cause they, we will, therefore, we'll be able to still bill the developers under Section 8. I agree with striking the word "emergency," just have service, but also on Section 7, though, we should consider similar language in using maybe "emergency" and/or "other service" as the town sees fit, maybe some type of language like that for Section 7 and 8. And then if we amend.
Well, again, one would just strike the word "emergency" out of 7 as well, it, it does the same thing, doesn't it?
Right, right. That's fine. But if we use terminology where we're not suspending or overlooking the policy this, for this year, I think we need to find the words for that, so that we can still bill the developers that are available under Section 8 for this year, for the services that we provide to those private ways. And I would also like to see, I mean, it is a sad state that we have developers in town that are still doing business that feel like they don't have to be responsible for their own private property, and that the responsibility is falling on the town's people. And, um, you know, I think it needs to be noted with that this is a mark on them. I mean, you don't wanna turn business away from our town, but I also don't think we want people doing business in our town that are gonna treat our citizens this way. Not fair. And they should be noted. You look, you wanted to, you know, call it a blacklist, but you shouldn't be able to pull another permit in this town or do anything until you pay up and hold responsibility.
That's, that's, that's a good sentiment, and I agree with it entirely, but we don't
grant the permits, it's the planning board that grants the permits, so.
We have to, that's what I'm gonna say, we have to ensure that the developer does not get his surety back unless his roads are accepted. I don't know what happened, but that developer never should've got his scent back.
Well, there's a procedure, but.
I don't know enough about that, and I, I expect that you don't either, to, to just make that blanket statement. You know, there are some guidelines under which we need to return money to, to developers, okay? And, and, you know, we need to tighten those policies to make sure that, that we're following to, to the letter of the law. But I, I'm, I'm not sure that I would agree that not accentuating giving back, but.
He still has roads out there.
Right, right. Relative to Kerry's thought, though, with, you know, as I think about this more, we don't need to suspend the policy, because the policy then, by taking out the word "emergency" in both cases, allows us to address, so the policy can still stay in effect, saying, "We're not plowing private ways," which also already addresses the ones that we've never done.
Right.
Right? And it, then, by taking out the word "emergency" here, allows us to address, um, the, the one or two instances where developers said, you know, "It's still my property, but I'm not gonna plow." So I, I don't, in my opinion, don't think we need to suspend the policy because of greater latitude that we've just written into it.
So basically, what you would be looking for, then, is just a motion to amend the current policy, removing the word "emergency" from Section 7 and 8, and then the policy stands as written?
Let's, let's make, just, let me take a minute to read that, just to make sure. For unaccepted subdivision roads that currently receive service for winter maintenance operations, town will cease to provide operations as of October 15th, 2008. As of that date, all winter operations will be responsible to be the developer. Then we say, in Section 8, "If the town has to provide service to a subdivision during a storm event because of a lack of adequate service by the developer-owner." So we would be covered there. In that way, the policy stands, with the exception of just taking out "emergency," and then, Section 8 then also allows us to invoice the developer for that maintenance. So. for that maintenance. So.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to bring Bob into this conversation and make sure, Bob, if you want mine, just to make sure that
Yeah, I just think that we need to get something tonight on paper in case it snows tonight or tomorrow. You know, I hate to see us wait another three or four days. That's too late.
Oh, yeah, no.
Has to be done tonight because it may be ice in the morning.
Right.
And I don't want to be juggling stuff in the morning, trying to figure what we're going to do and what we're not going to do.
Well, yeah, I think we need to tighten up the language on liability waiver and get that out to people. I like the suggestion that, you know, put, you know, 30-day limit on it, that kind of thing. And then this board will regroup in 30 days and we're going to survey. There are 30 houses on the street and we've got seven of these back. What do we want to do? That kind of thing, so.
Can you put it on the website, too, immediately when you get it? So we don't have to wait for the mail?
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably the best way, yeah. But, I mean, not everyone has access to the web. But, yeah, we'll send hard copies, but it will be available on the web as soon as we can.
See, in my case, I have the, I have a street where my driveway is on the way, so I will get one in the mail.
Oh.
I'll get a deliver one to them.
No, we have you as an abutter, I guess, so, okay.
Are you going to be concerned about in developments that don't have houses? We have like nine or seven or eight or nine lots that are not built on yet. You're not going to worry about those people? It's just that they have houses?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, and I think that that, I mean, thank you, that makes a good point. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that if the house is, has residents living in the house, then we have to have the paper back within the 30 days to continue plowing of that road. However, if it is a vacant lot or if it's a house that's on the market and there's no one living in it, then those will be, we won't hold the plowing of a road.
We're going to be reasonable about this, but we're asking you all to be reasonable as far as just limiting, you know, the town's exposure to the same level in your streets as it will be limited once it is accepted. And I think that's a real reasonable compromise.
One more question.
Could you step up the mic just so everyone can hear?
I was listening to you talk about amending the policy to allow you to bill developers for snow removal services. How is this going to apply to streets that haven't a developer anymore, like Jacomo and Anthony's Way? Will you plow those and bill who?
Nobody.
Yeah, to be determined. I mean, yeah, I mean, not, I don't think the policy addresses billing the residents, but, you know, the objective again is to get the roads accepted.
Okay, but the intent is, is, if I understand correctly, you're going to plow those roads, assuming that we all got our waivers in.
It's meant to be punitive to developers who aren't doing what they should be doing.
Thank you, sir.
I see in time.
Are we talking about all of the roads?
I'm sorry, come on.
Are we talking about all of the roads that are unaccepted or just the ones that you already plow?
Just ones that we already plow.
For the waivers, so it doesn't matter. If you don't plow our cul-de-sac now, it doesn't matter.
The town won't plan it, I'm sorry, won't plow it.
Can you tell us where we stand in the acceptance?
Which street do you live on?
Foxville Lane. Because a lot of work has been done this past summer.
Which one? That's a J. Taylor Construction.
There were a list of six or eight, and only the two, the extensions, were actually accepted at town meeting, right?
The developer, whoever the engineer who was working on it, we had it scheduled to vote at layout with a number of articles on the town meeting warrant, but the developer didn't forward finished layout plans for the board to vote the layout. So we couldn't, the board couldn't vote anything on it.
Is that developer, has he indicated that he is not going to plow those roads since he is in the process of working?
We have it listed as it's never been plowed and that J. Taylor Construction, Inc. is an active subdivision and there's interaction between the planning board and the developer.
The developer let us know that supposedly he met all the requirements of the board and that possibly in March it would be going on the acceptance, and you're telling us different.
No, when you say that.
Well, he said that he didn't meet all the qual
That was for fall town meeting that we had.
Right.
Okay.
Last week and the deadline was
Well, that's why I asked you where we stand now.
So you can move forward with the layout process and if the board, I mean, you could do a citizen's petition to have it on the May town meeting, which closes in March, or the board can sponsor it. Typically, as we talked about, the meetings for financial articles, but I think the board's willing to entertain it.
But my question is, is he hasn't said that he's not going to plow his own road. He's still, he's a reachable, I mean, if he's still working the process and if he wants to continue to work in Uxbridge, it would be to his benefit to plow his roads that have never been plowed by the town, you know.
We are not scheduled to plow those roads.
Right.
On the status, the developer is seeking final inspection.
Sorry, ma'am?
Right.
I'm Audra Coughlin from Jody Circle. I just want to, first of all, thank you for considering the citizens of these private ways and doing such a great job. But Jody Circle several years ago was presented to town meeting and actually, a lot of work was done by the town along with the developer to get that road in a state that it would be accepted. So I'm really surprised, having received no notification, that Jody Circle is not an accepted road because it was before town meeting.
Yeah, this is pretty complex, actually, but because the actual recording of the deed, like, if you're going to give me a deed, okay, I can't take it from you, you have to give it to me.
Okay.
Right? So the onus is on the developer to actually file that, okay? And that's, you know, I think sometimes where things fall through the cracks because, you know, I can't take a deed from you. I mean, we could at the town, you know, by eminent domain, it's not, you know, for this discussion, but we can't take the deed, you have to give it to us. And so even if the action is approved at town meeting, sometimes things fall through the cracks and happen for any variety of reasons.
So do we know on Jody Circle, is that the situation, that you've just not been able to get the deed transferred from the developer?
I don't know.
No, I got it right here, Kevin. Says DPW reported the construction essentially complete but deteriorating. No winter maintenance info received. At one time, it was complete, but
It was complete probably five or six years ago, so it's not surprising that there's been some deterioration.
Right.
And it was presented to town five or six years ago and the bond released at that time. And I understand that that's, the bond issue is a complex issue. So it would be reasonable that there's been some deterioration in that period of time.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way to, you know, and I guess I'd like to see an action item on this, is I understand that there's mass law that goes along with this process. But without breaking mass law, when a developer wants to come in and build in our town, he, in some way, he executes the deeds which then are held in escrow along with, you know, kind of like with the surety bond, where those deeds are signed, they're signed over to the town, but they cannot be executed until the point when the security bond is returned and the roads are ready for acceptance. So that if anything falls through, those deeds are being held by a third party and the town does not then have to go searching for the developer in order to get their hands on the deed to then turn around and have them accepted.
The recent process, I think, accomplishes that. It's these roads that are, I don't want to say older roads, but at a point where there wasn't as much oversight of the subdivisions as there is now and what we hope to do moving forward. So this is probably the worst-case scenario that we have. We didn't receive deeds until a week before town meeting on some of the roads that were this fall town meeting that were scheduled for acceptance. It's still trying to get that information from the developers.
Okay, so just so I understand you, so our policy is now that they do sign over, as soon as they want to break ground and start plowing a road through, that we have them execute those deeds and have them held by council or third party so that when all this is done, we don't have to track them down?
What I'll do is I'll, and I'm not sure of the answer to the question, so let me find the subdivision rules and regulations of the planning board, and that's something that would say exactly that process.
If I could just ask one additional question. It sounds to me like Jody Circle was ready, approved by the town, and it's just a conveyance of deed issue. So that didn't happen. And then in the subsequent five or six years, the road has deteriorated. Am I, is that a correct understanding?
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Okay, and so if the developer is now not available and we have a deterioration in the road simply because paperwork didn't get processed, where do we stand?
The town
Take the surety and fix the road.
No, the surety's already
The surety's already been released, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm an active developer for that.
Had the town accepted the road and it been conveyed properly, the town would have maintained it for those five years.
I understand.
So we're not in any worse condition than we would have been otherwise, really.
Right, so
The road doesn't deteriorate that much in five years.
Right, so it was accepted. It was the conveyance that's the issue. So the town would have had that responsibility had the conveyance happened.
That's correct.
So is it reasonable for us on Jody Circle to assume that the town will assume the fact that the deterioration happened simply because of a paperwork shortfall?
No.
It's reasonable for you to assume that. It's not reasonable to assume that governments act reasonably. There is massive evidence to the contrary.
Yeah. There are so many different permutations. Just another real quick example. You know, some developers, your property line goes to the curb. Others, it goes to the center line of the road, okay? So even if the town wanted to do something like an eminent domain taking of the road in order to take it where a developer doesn't exist, in some cases, you know, we would have to take from all the individual owners, you know, and you have to, you know, do a friendly taking of that stretch of land. Others, you know, the road itself is owned by the developers. There's all different permutations. And I'm told in actually in some developments, or at least one development, one side of the street is to the curb, the other side is to the center line or something like that. So it's all across the board, and there's many flavors of this, as there are people in this room, unfortunately.
Have we exhausted this subject?
I think we have.
Can I read for you a draft motion and then we can, without making a motion?
Sure.
Sure.
And then we can get input on it? Motion to amend BOS policy 2008-04, winter maintenance on unaccepted subdivision streets and private ways to remove the word "emergency" from paragraph 7 and 8 and to allow winter maintenance on unaccepted subdivision streets and private ways subject to receipt within 30 days of a properly signed release and waiver of claims from the residents abutting those unaccepted streets and private ways. Make sense?
Yes, but, just one thing.
Yes, but?
Yes, but, when you said
You can read that.
When you said the subdivision streets and private ways that were previously paved, subject to
That they were previously
I mean, previously plowed, thank you.
Do you need an additional appropriation, Kevin? We need an additional appropriation for FY10.
It's part of the motion. Private ways that were previously plowed.
Mike, where is that word "emergency" that you're taking out?
7 and 8.
Okay, somewhere in the recesses of my mind, I seem to recall that general law that allows the town to do something on somebody else's property and then charge that property owner is triggered by the town making a declaration that it's necessary to protect the public health and safety and welfare. So if you remove that word, we may be jeopardizing our chances to recover. I'm not, that's not certain. It's just in here somewhere. Now, as a practical matter, we don't plow roads when there's no ice and snow, right? We usually plow after the fact, which one would normally consider to be, you know, an issue involving public health and safety. So what's the utility of removing the word?
Because with the word in, it says that we will provide winter maintenance only in emergency situations.
Not every snowstorm is an emergency. An emergency situation entails something like having an ambulance or a police cruiser or a fire truck down there.
Okay.
And so we wanted to say
Well, it may mean that, but it's a practical matter. We don't wait until somebody's house is on fire before we send the snow plower, do we?
Understood. And therefore, by taking out "emergency," we can plow the street without one of the houses on the street being on fire.
Yes, but by the same time, we jeopardize in our ability to, to charge the owner of the road.
Why don't you just write "and/or" in case of emergency?
Or you define "service."
Why don't we leave it this way? Leave it the way you want, but check with town council. See, I'm not adverse to check
Wait a minute, you want to call town, you want to call town council?
Peter, no, no, no. I don't mind, but you notice it's a specific question and I don't want five hours of research. If he doesn't know the answer, tell him to forget it.
Chief Raiders has a
Perhaps so that we can avoid having to go to town council if it's that possible. Having people be able to get necessary services like their heat to keep their house warm and stuff does deal with the health and welfare of people's property.
If the oil trucks can't get there
The oil trucks can't get down there to put the oil in, there's no heat in the houses, that creates a police thing. Yeah, the house isn't on fire, maybe the person won't die. If it's zero degrees, we have issues. So I'm not sure that we're not wordsmithing if, I don't think we'll be damaging our ability to provide under that health and safety just because people need heat.
What happens if we added the word, took out the word "emergency" and put in the word "necessary"?
Let's provide "necessary," yeah, does that work for you?
I don't know. If it were me, I would spend 10 cents to call town council.
It's not going to be 10 cents.
Actually, it's free.
It's free.
What about the 30 days? 30 days to get the waivers in?
Yes.
Is that reasonable?
Yes.
If somebody's gone for 30 days?
Yeah, in the hospital?
Well, I think what you're saying, though, is one person is gone for 30 days, the whole development or the whole street is up.
Well, I don't think the board's going to be that unreasonable.
Well, look, I mean, if you can provide a situation where, you know, we can get proof that that person, I mean, is, has no communication with their residents for 30 days, then we will take that under advisement.
But we also, as, as members of that street, can't be responsible for the actions of every member on the street. That is a real concern, that 30 days is a real concern to me because we can't dictate what other people that live on our street will do or don't be able to.
Duly noted, but we'll address that if the situation comes up. I mean, you got to give us some credit here. We're trying to be as reasonable as possible about this.
I mean
All right, one thing I would ask that the motion include, because have quiet, please. I would ask the motion to include also that future budget cycles include separate line items for plowing of public ways and private ways.
As part of the motion?
Could we, can that be a separate motion?
Okay, yeah, sure. I just want us to go on back to that. We're going to set that as a policy as well.
Okay. Do you want to make this as a motion? Subject to review by town council? I would give it to you, but I don't think people
Not review, ask the specific question.
Okay, David, did
Yeah, just a point of information on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the separate appropriation for plow, for plowing these streets, just, I just want to remind the board that we, by mass general law, cannot reduce our appropriation for snow and ice on an annual basis. Right now, we, right now, we budget $250,000 for snow and ice removal. If we, the only way we could have a separate designation for these streets would be one of two ways. You could either take some funds away from that $250,000, but even if it's not approved at town meeting, we have to set that budget. So we can't really regulate it that way. The only other way to do it is by a separate appropriation. So we'd have to be raising more funds to do that.
The fact of the matter is, though, that almost every year, these accounts are underappropriated anyway.
That's correct.
I just want it to be a conscious decision that we're making. And I don't want to be having this discussion five years from now at this table that we've still got undedicated streets that we're plowing and people are concerned about it, you know. So I want it to be a reminder, if nothing else. And I'll defer to you as the mechanic as to how to handle it.
Okay.
I think that's your expertise, not mine. But I just, I think it needs to be, you know, in front of us at least, though.
All right.
It's more of a detailed, it's more of a journal entry item is what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want it now?
Go ahead.
Ready, Kim?
Ready to go?
I move that we amend BOS policy 2008-04, winter maintenance on unaccepted subdivision streets and private ways to remove the word "emergency" from paragraph 7 and 8 and to allow winter maintenance on unaccepted subdivision streets and private ways that were previously plowed, subject to receipt within 30 days of a properly signed release and waiver of claims from the residents abutting those unaccepted streets and private ways.
Second.
Get that, Kim? Discussion?
And we'll refer it to town council. We'll limit his, to what, 15 minutes of review? You want to pay 15, you want to pay 30?
Peter, you're going to draft the question to town council?
Well, I stated the question.
No, no, if Peter sent the question to town council, they wouldn't believe it was real.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking Peter.
Okay, all right, I'll call for the votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Second was Carrie.
Sorry, me.
Okay, so Bob's given up the plows. We're going to plow the roads that we
No, it's not going to snow tonight.
Plowed last year. Not until after Christmas.
It's going to rain tomorrow.
All right.
It needs to rain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I thank you all very much.
Mark, hey, Mark, you should have been more forceful this past spring. You could have saved us a lot of grief.
Don't take that on us. It was your idea. You brought that up in September. August, August, yeah.
They don't love us anymore. They don't love us anymore. You need my scribbling, or do you have it all down?
I think I've got it.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm saying, just like I'm celebrating.
Oh, there he is. Just came in. Rick Neder just walked in.
I guess, as a matter of, I guess, just for clarification, now, how do we, how do we, is there a, a policy or procedure to follow to inform the planning board that, you know, we want to, we put some teeth into this maintenance policy to affect the developers?
Well, do we have a planning board?
Yeah.
They were, they were absent from town meeting, they were absent from the Central Mass Planning Commission meeting. There was nobody, I was the only one from Uxbridge there.
Item nine has that the planning board shall require that sufficient funds be provided in each subdivision, perform security, blah, blah, blah. And I think that that's already a practice from the subdivision approval, so I think we're...
Guys, can I step outside if you're going to have a conversation? Thanks. Excuse me.
We should have taken emergency out of number nine, Mr. Chairman.
No, I didn't.
Has it numbered nine?
It does, sir.
That's moving forward, yeah. I agree with you on that one.
Yeah, no, that's, exactly, that's for future. That's okay. Keep it in this.
Okay. Well, that's under the...
We would have had to call everybody back.
Yeah.
You can revisit it again next year.
I wish you ever could consider. All right, like to move on to the next agenda item, cable television. Discussion of current contract with Charter, planning for negotiations. Current license agreement with Charter Communications expires on October 6th, '10. Also like to get an update from the Cable Advisory Committee. Rick Neder is the chair, and Rick is here now. Rick, Mr. Fortner had raised some questions relative to, to public access television, and more specifically, the funding mechanism and all that, a while back. And I've said, you know, that, that at some point, we need to address just, you know, public access television as a whole because we're on the verge of needing to enter into negotiations for our next contract. There's other providers on the horizon, you know, such as, you know, FiOS or Verizon or whatever, and want to understand what the impact is there. And there's been some questioning relative to the proposed charge of, of the Cable Advisory Committee, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we kind of revisit that as well. But I wanted to just give you the opportunity just to address the board and, and tell us, you know, kind of where you are right now with the Cable Advisory Committee, what your experience has been since you've been on the committee and been elected chair, and then if you have any thoughts relative to, you know, next, you know, 12 to 24 months, you know, what, what your future holds for that committee.
I'd say at this point, with the committee, we're, we're still trying to gather as much information as we can about the process, as far as renewing contracts and possibly trying to solicit new contracts. Nobody on the committee really has a, any prior experience with this, so it's, we're trying to gather as much information on that as possible. At the same time, we're, we're trying to put together a survey, as you know, to see if we can get some, some input from the cable subscribers and also town residents who might not have cable but might have some, you know, opinion on if things change, maybe they'd get cable. We're trying to get some information on that. I think we're hoping to, in the next few months, start, at least with the Charter, getting the renewal process moving forward. I'm hoping to get a representative in from Department of Telecommunications and Energy to get some, some more information on this process, as far as pitfalls and things we might want to watch out for. As far as the next 12 to 24 months, the contract with cable, I believe, is up in less than two years now.
2010.
2010.
It's February.
That's October.
October 2010.
Okay, so a little less than two years. There's, I mean, there's, there's two ways that the FCC provisions for doing a renewal. One is a formal process, which you have between, prior to the expiration of the contract, you have between 36 and 30 months to initiate this formal process, which, that 30 months passed earlier this year, I think in the spring. There's also an informal process, which we're probably going to end up using, which I think most people end up using. It's, it can be done at any point, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mean, we've, we've passed the deadline, it's too late to go out with a generalized RFP to get multiple?
No.
Oh, okay.
It, for the renewal, they, I think that it's more for issuing authorities and providers that have more problems and more hostile relationship, where it's like a, a very structured formal process, where it's, within that 30 to 36 month window, the issuing authority would, I believe, initiate it, and then there's like set dates, like 120 days for the cable company to respond, and then the issuing authority has a certain number of days to gather information, and it's, it's very, very structured.
But you, you still have time to make the request and then consider what Charter will offer, what Verizon will offer, what, you know...
They're doing two separate things, Mike.
Oh, okay, okay.
Charter, as a licensee, has an expectation of renewal.
Okay.
And that's the problem. We have to find some reason not to renew the contract. It is a non-exclusive contract. So anytime the town wants to solicit other cable providers, we're free to do that.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to...
They can come in and run their cables along the street, the same as Charter can, the same as a telephone company can. The two are not connected.
Okay.
Rick, have you got any interest on that yet, on the other companies we were talking about?
I think the consensus is with Verizon, which is probably our only other alternative, is that they've...
It's not now.
It's not now. They've, they've got enough towns in the area that they're, they've...
For FiOS, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've, they've got so many towns that they've just signed commitments with, and they have like 18 months to get, everybody online that they've, we're probably looking at a couple of years at least. Not to say that we can't go out and issue an RFP and see if maybe they'd be interested in entering a negotiation.
Could we invite Comcast, for example, to, to explore coming to town as well? There are towns in Massachusetts that have competing cable companies.
And we could, we could try for that. I don't know how, I'm hoping to get more information on that because that is going to probably be more complex because it would be a situation where Comcast would either have to string all new line all over town, or they'd have to somehow be leasing the, the bandwidth off the lines from Charter. I don't know, I'm not sure exactly how that works. But there is towns, particularly out in Middlesex County, that, that have up to three different cable companies.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how this plays into it, but I was on Verizon just the other day, and I put in my Uxbridge telephone number, and it says, "Congratulations, FiOS is available for your number." Now, I don't know...
That's correct.
Now, I don't know if they're doing that as a survey type thing to see how many, you know, but I found that interesting.
They told me the same thing.
Did you call? Okay.
And I said, "Lady, I know what, you know, fiber cable looks like, and there ain't no fiber cable on Johnson Road." "Oh, yes, I have it on my screen." I said, "Well, your screen is lying to you." And then when you, when we talked to where the people actually know what they're doing, they said, "No, you don't have..."
They should have ordered it as soon as she said you had it on your screen.
Well, one thing that they've been doing is, there's nothing that prevents them from, there's two things. There's FiOS internet and telephone, and there's FiOS cable television, or television. There's nothing that prevents them from coming into town and running FiOS internet and phone service. So in a lot of towns, what they've been doing is, they go in, they run, they structure everything in, all the fiber, and they offer internet and telephone. And then as soon as the contract is negotiated and signed, they can basically flip the switch and start offering television.
But they have no plan to do that in the near future in the town of Uxbridge.
As far as I know, that's...
I was wondering if you ever got to the table and had to talk? No? Okay, that's...
So within the scope of Charter service in Uxbridge, what is negotiable within that contract? And what stays out? In other words, could the public come into one of your public meetings and declare Charter's charging us too much money for this, that, or the other service, and the contract needs to reduce the charges?
My understanding is that channel, anything like services, channel lineups aren't negotiable.
They are?
They are not.
Are not, okay.
Things that are negotiable are, and I saw Northbridge just did this, they were able to get like, I believe, a 10% senior since discount.
We used to have 20.
Okay.
Until the last Cable Advisory Committee threw it away.
So, I mean, that's something...
Would that be just on basic service or the totality that you buy? Just basic?
I was thinking there's the...
Services, $13 and, well, that includes tax, $13.25.
But, you know, there, there are little irritants with Charter that I don't know that they could be addressed contractually, or do we just have... For instance, my pet peeve is the billing cycle. There's a certain date when the bill was generated, but it gets in my mailbox 10 days later, and I've got four days to pay it.
Yeah.
And if I'm away, then I get a late charge.
Yep.
So to avoid a late charge, I end up a lot of time prepaying, but they don't give me any interest because I prepaid my bill a month in advance. So that's an irritant. They need to do something with that billing cycle, that if they're going to generate the bill on the 13th of the month, they put it in the mailbox on the 13th of the month, and it'll get to me by the 15th. You know, that is just one of my little pet peeves.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be speculating, but my guess is that that would be something that we might be able to put into the contract.
And also, these little things that pop up on the bottom of the TV screen, and they dance around and move around in it.
Pixels?
Yeah, whatever those are. Advertising something that's coming up.
I like on...
Oh, yeah, no.
The TV Guide?
No, 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 no.
Oh, you're talking about...
Little figures from the next program.
Yeah, if you're watching TNT.
That irritates me.
No.
If I'm watching CNBC and I'm watching the ticker scroll, and all of a sudden some little guy pops up, you know, blocking my view of the ticker, I get irritated.
But that's not from Charter, that's from the...
Oh, it's from the network.
That's from the network. I mean...
I did want to address Mike's one, one point, though, you know, like complaints like, you know, billing cycles and those types of things. You know, one of the charges of, of the advisory committee is to supervise the company's response to complaints and respond to citizens' questions regarding the cable system. So, I mean, that certainly would be something that you guys could, can weigh in and try to put, you know, apply some leverage.
What we, we actually had, one of our last meetings, we had, and a representative from Charter, I believe he's the regional director, and we tried to get some information on exactly, see what we could get from information on complaints that they were getting and what they were resolving or outstanding complaints. The only...
It's a form they fill out, and they send to the...
It's Form, Form 500.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's listed. It's not very detailed, but it's listed.
So we want to get a copy of that, but it's, I think it's, there's some stats on it, but there's not a whole lot of detail, which I think would, would be what would be useful to us. But I think the thing we want to avoid is that if someone has a problem with their cable, that they come into the Cable Advisory Committee first.
No, right.
And that we're like a mediator. It should be for, I would think if someone has an ongoing problem with the cable company that, and it's not getting resolved, then they could come and say...
Exactly, right. If they've not received adequate response from Charter. Right, okay.
But...
What, what is your schedule of public hearings? Are you going to invite the public commentary on it?
Well, I mean, public's welcome to come to any meeting, but I think the first step is, we want to get the survey out, hopefully within the next couple of months, and then hopefully have one or two meetings that are advertised and maybe we could get, I'm hoping quite a few people to come out and voice their opinion.
Do you keep a regular schedule of meetings? Are they, you know, once a month?
First Monday of the month, first, sorry, first Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday of the month, okay.
But, I mean, there are, I mean, there's some other things, probably, I'm guessing the selectmen will want to voice in on. One is the, the amount that, we can take up to 5%. There's a 5% tax, up to 5% tax that can be put on that's taken for public access channels. I don't know if it's going to pass, but there's a bill right now in the state that Verizon is trying to push through that gives them a license for the whole state at once. They won't have to come in and negotiate with local authorities, they'll be able to, they have a bulk license. And I believe what that allows them to do is, they don't have to pay that 5% or whatever we determine it is. So the problem we could run into is, let's say we, right now, I think it's 4.25. We leave it at 4.25 with Charter, we re-sign the contract with that, and then, two years down the road, Verizon gets, this bill passes, Verizon comes in, and they take a third of the customer base away from Charter. Our money coming in is going to drop by a third, so...
The money coming is going to drop by a third because what you're saying is Verizon will not be required to give us the 4.25%.
That's correct.
But Charter still would.
That's correct.
Because of the contract that we had with them.
Right.
But this rule won't apply to Charter also? Or is it going to apply to all telecommunications?
You can imagine their attorneys will be sharpening their pens, though, too.
I'm thinking it was going to probably apply to all, so we'll lose all cable access.
Well, I mean, right now, it's, the way it's, I've been reading about it, and the way it seems to be worded now, it's, it's for, it really just applies to Verizon, so... But I could certainly see that scenario where if, if it looks like it's going to pass, they're going to all try and jump on it and...
Now, the more fundamental question about, about the, the public access fee is the negotiated point, you said, you know, we can collect up to 5%.
You can't really.
What's that?
You can't really. Theoretically, you can, but the 5% is the maximum, and that includes costs incurred by Charter or other provider in providing the facilities to do the public access.
So if they're not providing it, the...
No, in other words, they're paying us four and a quarter. But the four and a quarter doesn't cover their costs of providing the, the channels and so forth. So they're saying that, that 0.75% is what compensates them for the bandwidth and so other expenses.
So it's a total of five, so...
So four and a quarter percent is a, is a price of the maximum.
Well, then, I, I guess, the, the real fundamental question I'm trying to ask is, is the 5% taken regardless of what percentage we negotiate being brought back to the town?
No.
Or is the...
People will say, "Oh, yes, they'll take it anyway." That may be true if you negotiate a stupid contract, but if you don't negotiate a contract saying, and pegging it to what other communities fee is based on their contributions, if we don't take, if we take 3%, then we want our subscribers to pay them.
I mean, my, my question is, if, if Charter is, is authorized by law and does take 5% from every town across the board?
No, 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 no. The five, the, the peg access fee is a fee imposed by the licensing authority, us. It's an outside fee. So Charter, it's like the cigarette tax. R.J. Reynolds adds the cigarette tax to the price, and they pass through the money to the government. And they pass through the money to the government. Same with the gas tanks, the sales tax. It's a tax imposed by the municipality.
So what you're saying is, is if we say the, the most we want our citizens to be charged is 3%.
Yes.
Then Uxbridge in theory would get 2.5% and Charter would take their 0.75%.
No, that, that, that's true if we're stupid and don't write also in the contract that we want the, the, um, monies paid by subscribers to reflect that reduced tax.
Right, I'm saying, right, under the assumption we write that contract. So they can't take 5%. They can only take 3%.
Yes.
And if, and if we're saying you can only take 3%, in theory, we're going to get 2.25 because we still have to give something to Charter for taking the money for us, the processing fee.
Oh, well, for some amount, yeah.
Right, some amount. It may not be the same amount at that point. It may be a half a percent, but we have to kick Charter a percentage of whatever new amount.
It's not a processing fee for collecting the, the tax.
It's administrative fee.
It's a cost, no, it's a cost they incur for providing the bandwidth for these public access channels, which they could otherwise sell to somebody else.
Okay.
Right?
I understand what you're saying, right.
I think Barry has something to contribute. Just had a cow back there.
Now, the, the federal law or the federal rules that you're regarding to is the Cable Act of 1982 or most recently, Night, Cable Act of 1986, where they allowed, the Federal Communication allowed negotiating contracts to negotiate up to 5%. Okay? Now, towns can go in, renegotiate two, three, four, whatever. They get that 3%, bottom line. There's no processing fee, nothing that the cable company takes. Now, there has been over the years, you know, the discussion of, oh, they're taking the 5%, but only giving us 3% and pocketing two. That, that has not been the case in almost the three contracts that I have ever helped negotiate with. Whatever percentage that you negotiate, that's what you get back. There's no other processing fee or anything like that.
I'm not saying anything, I didn't say anything different.
Yes, you said something in regards to the 0.75 that they would do.
The four and a quarter was the practical maximum because.
Because they say the 5% is going to include the cost that they incur in providing the channels and so forth.
But Barry's saying they're not, no, they're not incurring any cost.
No, they're not, they're not incurring any.
Well, they're incurring a cost, but they're not getting it.
The reason peg, peg access was set up was more of a, um, a friendly negotiating item for the communities where one particular cable company, back in 1984, 85, you know, it was very rare that some towns had two, three companies and things like that. But over the years, more companies have now developed to offer it. Um, I remember seven, eight years ago, Newton had two, and that was the big thing. You had RCN and you had AT&amp;T. So that's really opened the door to a lot of this with Verizon coming in and so on. And we're seeing more and more, uh, cable companies coming in to compete with other cable companies, so to say.
Okay, I guess I, this quite, another service that's provided in town and I'm, and I don't have a lot of knowledge on it because I don't have it, but like, uh, direct access.
DirecTV?
Direct TV.
Satellite.
Um, and those, the satellite and those individuals, subscribers who have that don't have access.
To public access, cable.
Right.
Yeah, I'm a DirecTV user.
Why is that, why is that, the DirecTV, like, can the ca, town negotiate with them to provide that to our residents also?
No, because, uh, key word, cable. Satellite TV, cable TV.
Yeah.
Cable TV is brought in through a cable. Satellite is brought in through a satellite receiver.
But we can't, you can't provide them, the media for it to be.
We would not have the funding to do that.
We, we would need an uplink to the satellite.
Right, we would have to purchase a satellite dish and a lot of equipment to provide that.
So we couldn't convince, well, they're already here, so there would be no benefit for them to buy that for us?
Right.
Now, it wasn't even until about five years ago that you can even get local channels on satellite. You used to have to put rabbit ears up for your local channels and then get all the national channels like ESPN and HBO and all those through your satellite link. But you used to have to get broadcast for, for local channels. And that took like an act of Congress, literally, in order to have them be able to, to transmit your local channels because it was this whole competition with cable. And the cable industry was fighting against allowing the satellite providers to be able to carry local channels.
The reason why I bring it up is a, a friend who has, one of the new TVs, who has the direct access. And before he had rabbit ears on the side of his house so he could get his local channels. But with the new HTV and everything has to go digital, now when he puts up that rabbit ear, he picks up like all of the stuff that's floating around out there.
Can, can you define local channels, first of all? Because 2, 4, 5, 7 is definitely carried on, uh, high def on dish television. Public access television is not.
Okay, and that's what you're saying? We would have to be.
Right, because when you said the rabbit ears and getting local channels, that kind of flipped the switch, yeah. That, that is all negotiated through the, uh, the dish network and.
And we just don't have the funding available to turn ours into that digital?
The cable company would have to run a cable from wherever the sender is usually, you know, to send our signal out there, and that would not be a cost effective.
So when we transmit our, when you transmit your signal to cable, I mean, to Charter, they're turning it into the digital for the new requirements that are going to be coming up, okay?
Right. Well, it's, it's a digital signal, it's going, we, to be honest with you, we'll always be analog. You're not going to get the high definition quality for public access television. You know, like Rick said, we had a meeting with, um, a representative from Charter and he brought that up. You know, it will be, it will be received, we'll send it digitally, but it'll be received at the head end, which is located in Douglas, and then sent out as an analog signal.
Okay.
Through a digital concept.
I actually want, want to paint a broader brush here at this meeting today anyway, but, okay. Thank you, Barry.
Yeah.
All right, um, a couple of things I, I want to address. Um, you know, Mr. Fortin had raised, uh, I think it was four questions some time ago. Want to make sure that, that, you know, we as a board, you know, agree that we've provided or, or, you know, provided him with answers and, you know, I've asked, you know, Jill to just give us an update on that. Want to make sure that Howard is comfortable. I, I think the answers have all come out over the, the time we've been discussing this, but I want to make sure you're comfortable that this will satisfy your questions. And then I, I do want to have a discussion about, uh, the, uh, public access funds and, and want to just have, have the finance director talk to us a little, a little bit again about general fund versus restricted fund because it's right up in our pack. And you're smiling, Peter, but, um, we, we need to come to an agreement here. And one of Howard's questions was along those lines, too, relative to the.
But Kevin, we got this four-page letter from town council. Told us absolutely nothing new. That's the thousand-dollar bill that we incurred last month. It was the finance director that, you said, there's a law, remember? There's a law, you can't use it, da, 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 da. And then I said, what's the law? He said, this is the law. It wasn't the law. And then run, then he said, there is no law. And then he said, the Department of Revenue said, towns, all towns do it differently. So you should keep doing whatever you're doing. That doesn't make sense. If all towns do it differently, that means you can do it any way you want. And then it's, well, the Enterprise Fund, except that it isn't Enterprise Fund. I mean, why do we insist on getting information from people who don't have any knowledge? And we go on for months this way.
But in fairness, Peter, the, the, the.
I'm not that unfair.
The, the DOR has no knowledge on this, I mean.
They do, they have absolute knowledge.
And, and the answer they gave was what? Do what you've been doing.
Yes, but think about.
Because everyone does it differently, so that's not an answer to me.
What they said was, all monies coming into the town belong to the general fund unless there's a specific law or otherwise. For instance, the town council letter talks about a grant. Well, we did get a grant. The last contract Charter gave us, what was it?
Hundred and five thousand.
Hundred and five thousand dollars. That was a grant to purchase equipment. That's it. So I know what that is, Charter knows what it is, everybody knows what that is. But that's not the same thing as the other monies. But we keep going around and around and around. There's no difference from what town council is saying here for a thousand dollars that we haven't had floating around in different formats for a year.
However, regardless of whether there is a law, not a law, we are allowed to have a special fund.
A what?
A special fund, whatever you want to call it. Not an Enterprise Fund, but we, we can set this money aside. And there is advantages to keeping it separate from the general fund so that we can keep, you know, cable access and, and things of that sort going.
That's an advantage.
Because if it disappeared into the general fund, it would never be seen again.
There is an advantage. There's also a disadvantage. We all have money, we have different things we do with our money. Now, we can take some of our money and put it in a jar and say, this money is only to buy ice cream cones. And then you find, uh, your furnace blew up and there's no money in the furnace blew-up jar. So you say, gee, I got all this money in the ice cream cone jar. It really makes more sense to heat the house than buy ice cream. So a thinking person would say, I'll take the money out of the ice cream jar because that's more important. That's how people make decisions. But if it's in a special account that can only be used to buy ice cream, have you helped yourself or hurt yourself? That's the problem.
But it's not, that's not an apples to apples comparison, Peter. Personal finance.
No, it's ice cream versus.
Okay, ice cream versus furnace explosion account, okay. So, but, you know, if, if you really think about it, I mean, comparing personal finance to municipal finance, you might as well compare apples to, to furnace explosion accounts because that, that's what you're doing here. I mean, you know as well as anybody that funds are not fungible on the municipal side while they are.
They are.
On the school, on the school department side.
No, they are by town meeting.
Not readily fungible. Okay, it takes town meeting action to move funds, um, on the municipal side of the house.
Yes.
You know, a dollar is not a dollar on the municipal side of the house.
But it's not an insurmountable obstacle, is it? We do it all the time.
Right.
Well, first of all, we're not, I'd like to interject at this point. The, the revenue that's coming in is not the same as the general fund revenue. We're talking about taking money only from the people who have Charter.
Correct.
So therefore, I would argue that if we're taking, if we have a fund, an ice cream fund, a charter fund that's that fat and has that much money that it's busting the picky jar, the picky jar, then we need to stop taking that much money from the Charter people.
Yes.
But I don't agree with taking that money from the Charter people and then distributing it to everybody else in town who have not paid for that.
It's not coming from Charter people, it's coming from the subscribers.
It's coming from you and I who have Charter. If you have DirecTV, you're not paying one dime. So why should you benefit from any of that money?
Your argument is valid, 100% valid, Carrie.
Okay, let's lower the fee then.
Okay, but remember one thing. I paid more than $1,200 for permission to build my house. Now, under state law, under the constitution of the state, that fee is supposed to represent the actual cost of providing the service to me. It doesn't. We collect a hundred times more.
One thing at a time, but just because we have an inconsistency in some process doesn't mean we have to continue here.
Hold the phone. If you are saying we're going to stop that practice, we no longer use the $500,000 in fees that we get from the building department as general fund revenue, fine, I'll, I'm with you on that. Now, how will you make up the budget? You going to close a senior center library again? We get a lot of money on the pretense of doing one thing when in fact we spend the money on doing other things.
But, but see, you know, part of the reason, uh, building permits, and there's a fee for them, is to regroup the cost of, of, you know, the building inspector, the inspectional services, all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Okay.
But they, they.
But anyway, let me finish one thought before you, you ask me to death here. All right, but if I want to throw a building up on my property, I can call town hall and say, I'm going to put a building up, please send your building inspector down. Okay, that's, that's available to me as a, as a service, as a taxpayer. Um, and it's important that, that that building inspector be available in order to permit my, okay?
Okay.
You, you hear me out here, okay? Contrast that with cable, okay? You pay into the public access fee. I, as a Charter subscriber, can scream all day, or not Charter, I'm DirecTV subscriber, can scream all day and night about, you know what, um, I want to see those channels. That is not a service available to me on Charter. So, so therefore, it's unfair, I mean, not Charter, on DirecTV, okay? I cannot watch public access television on DirecTV. So it's unfair for me to say, hey, Peter, you know that money that, that you spent specifically to provide public access television on Charter? I don't have Charter, but you know what, I don't think that money should be spent for that. I think it should be spent for something else that I want to have it spent for. See, that money should be segregated to the subscribers.
And by the same token, all the building permit fees and the plumbing permit fees, electrical permit fees and the well permit fees should get the same treatment because under the constitution of Massachusetts, municipalities have the power to assess a property tax. Some cities have the authority to impose a meals tax or a, um, a town room tax, such as Boston and I think Waybe Wista. We don't have that. The amount of fee we charge for these inspections is supposed to just cover the cost, the salaries, the overhead, the benefits and, and so forth.
Right, but it covers.
But we use that money because we charge a lot more than the actual cost to the tune of $400,000, $500,000 in excess of what our cost is.
But those are required. We have no choice. If you want to build a pro, a, a building on your property, you have to have the building inspector come out and inspect that property.
I don't mind that.
You can't say, you know, I opt not to do this, but I don't have to have Charter.
I don't mind that, Carrie. I do mind very much paying $1,200.
But that's a different issue than, it is, it's a very different issue than.
Well, because if you lived in another town, you could pay $4,000.
Should be thankful.
Right, our fees are not that high.
Hey, if we lived in Nazi Germany, we'd be shocked. I mean, give me a break, Carrie.
The, the thing is, Carrie, we are breaking the law if we are charging fees in excess of the cost of the service provided.
Okay, and I don't disagree with that. And if we're breaking the law, then we need, right. Then we need, then maybe that's something that we need to look at. I'm not disagreeing with that.
What do you mean maybe?
Okay, then something we'll look at, Peter.
We, we got rid of the, the tree warden because he doesn't have a, a license to do something he doesn't do.
You're right, if we're breaking the law, then we need to stop. I, I'm.
When? At the next meeting?
When you want to close senior centers, lay off staff.
Yeah.
When you want to present a solution.
Yeah, Jill's absolutely right.
The revenue.
So fair is fair.
I, I understand what you're saying. Okay, then we, then we need to look at those fees and then we need to look at, hm, I guess the rate then for the property tax. We'll have to assess that or look at another way how we're going to raise revenue to run this town, to provide the services that the people say they want or we think they want. I guess that's a better way to put it.
To be more correctly, the people who want something say they want that thing.
But, but, but again, I mean, the, the fact that, that building fees go to pay for a building inspector, that, that's a service that's available to everybody who wants to build a home in town can, has a right to call town hall and say, please send a building inspector out and build a home.
Well, it's not that they have a right to, they have to. You have no choice.
Oh, yeah, no, no, exactly, right.
Or else the town will tell you to rip your building down.
But what I'm saying is, it's a service generally available to everybody.
It's not a service, it's a punishment.
Well, okay, you, you can debate that, but again, it's, it's a punishment available equally to everybody.
Yes.
Okay, I cannot be punished to watch Magdusarian Speaks on DirecTV because I don't, I don't get those channels.
Right.
Okay? So, so that's not a punishment that's equally available to me as it is to the rest of the, the community who, who chooses to, to be punished that, that way. So.
By the same token, only the people who want the punishment of the inspector pay the punishment fee. So you're back to the same thing.
Except being required, being required and having it available.
But required is different, though. Right. Because if you do, if you do build that building and you don't call that building inspector and you get caught, you may have to tear down that building. So not only do, and then, and actually this town doesn't even impose penalties, but in theory, you should then also be penalized for not following the law in the first place.
I'm not suggesting we don't follow the law or we don't get a permit. All I'm suggesting is that as a matter of. that as a matter of reality, we charge far in excess of the legally allowable amount for these permits and fees across the board.
Then, Peter, I know that if you're...
I say that in answer to Kevin's argument that, "Well, this money is somehow, this cable money is sacred and it can only be used for cable." So, well, we're going to have a mobile television production studio. Because why? Because we force people to pay us the money.
Let's see, and I won't argue with you for a second whether 4.3% is the right amount or not.
I don't know either.
Okay, but I will argue with you that I think that is dedicated to cable and not to the general fund, anyway.
Why?
Um, I do want to address a couple of things. I want to address Howard's questions.
You're not answering my first question.
It was.
All right, you just continue to go around and around and around. You're not answering my first question.
Okay.
Let's see, I would be happy to try and help.
Come up to the microphone, please.
When I first talked to you about this issue, I said to you, "I have no bias. I don't really care what happens to the funds that Charter provides to the town other than as a possibility, are they in fact available for appropriation for things other than cable access?" As I remember it, this is prior to my question, as I remember it, part of the reason for the four and a quarter percent or whatever the heck it is, uh, came about ten years ago when, quote, "The town wasn't satisfied with what Charter was doing, providing cable access." And as a result, we were going to do it ourselves. And that's why we have a cable coordinator. Uh, and that's why we have a budget that is appropriated at town meeting because Uxbridge said to Charter, "You're doing an unsatisfactory job and as a result, we're going to do it ourselves." And negotiations took place and a percentage showed up of four, four and a quarter percent, whatever the heck it is. And that is my impression of the genesis of the percentage. My question has got no relationship to that. My question is simply around the general fund. And the question I asked was, "Does the signing of the contract with Charter by five members of the Board of Selectmen, Trump, MGL, 44, Section 53, and so on? There may be other legal questions, but it would seem if so, the PEG access account is valid. And if not so, then it would seem that the PEG access account is not valid." Reference Section 6.3 of the contract. What happened was, the Board of Selectmen signed a contract with Charter Communications, which I think, based upon me reading, uh, GL 44, Section 53, that violates that law. And it violates that law because what that law says is, and I won't dig it out to read it to you, but what that law says is, "All funds that come to the town go to the general fund unless the legislature provides this, this..."
Enterprise fund, most likely.
And all the rest of the razzmatazz. That has, that's not included in, the four and a quarter percent is not included in any of those situations. Therefore, by inference, by inference, the money should go to the general fund. But the Board of Selectmen signed a contract. And in their signing that contract, they established a fund called, whatever it's called. And the Board of Selectmen agreed that the four and a quarter percent or whatever it is that comes in, they're going to put it in that fund and they're only going to spend it for this. So we have a dilemma here. We have a dilemma, which is, I believe, the Board of Selectmen are breaking, as the issuing authority, are breaking state law. But they also can't find themselves being in default of a contract. That's why, in my opinion, the DOR says nothing. The DOR won't put anything in writing because there's been some sort of, uh, discussion many, many years in the past that said, "Hey, here's how things are going to happen." And that's okay, but what I'm concerned with is the next contract. Are the Board of Selectmen prepared to sign a contract, in my view, to break state law to provide this PEG access fund or not? And if they are, then we'll have to deal with that as a legal issue. If they're not, then the providing of funds from Charter to the town of Uxbridge becomes an issue around, they're required to provide PEG access to the town.
If we want it.
If we want it, okay? And we said we don't want it, okay? So, so we can say, I guess, "Well, we don't want, uh, we don't want the money." And let the money go back to the subscribers. And again, I have no bias one way or the other.
Let me ask you a question, and don't read anything into this question. Um, I'm just trying to understand the history of this a little bit more. It's a ten-year contract, right, which it was signed in 1990?
No.
I'm guessing?
No, it was...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 2000, because the...
2000?
Signed in 2000 and runs till 2010.
And that's the second tenure term, but we're in the second tenure term.
Okay, right. And don't read anything into this question, Howard. Were you on the board at the time that that contract was signed?
No.
Because I'm wondering what the process we went through, you know, if the board got any advice relative to that exact issue that you just raised.
Uh, let's see, the, uh, I happen to be sitting in the chair you're sitting in and I made every effort I could to, in fact, discharge the Cable Advisory Committee because I didn't think they knew what the heck they were doing. And I did not get the support from the other four members of the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, I objected to most of what they were trying to do from a, uh, from a contract standpoint. So the answer is yes, I was on the board and yes, I objected.
Okay, but you are on the board when that contract was executed then with Charter?
No, Phil Wheelock was the chairman.
As the discussions went on, I was on the board. I then left the board. I was not reelected. And as Peter says, Phil Wheelock was the chairman of the board.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to recreate history. I understand how, you know, if we had any advice relative to the contract at that time.
It sounds like, and this happens often, that there is a law on the books that, um, at some point, its interpretation is, I use the word loosely interpreted, um, to apply to a particular situation. And then that is adopted and it is never challenged. So my understanding from our, from legal counsel and what he's provided us, what he's saying is, there's no case law to support that the, the letter of this law is being read literally, that it has to go into the general, the mass general law that Howard referred to, that it has to go into the general fund, that other towns have interpreted it, that they can apply it as they deem. And this may have been what they were given 10 years ago. It was kind of, I mean, there's a lot of laws on the books, that there's a lot of things that we do that could be deemed illegal, but you will never be taken to court for it. And, you know, because they're not enforceable laws. And it looks like, instead of DOR applying to have this law changed to apply to the current times that are going on, they're just choosing to overlook it.
The DOR is not overlooking anything. They are looking at the general laws as they exist. And their, their letters and their communications are very specific. And they point to all these laws. What we are doing doesn't match any of those laws.
But they're not telling us what we're doing is illegal.
No, they're not saying that.
Right, exactly.
I mean, our local...
But you think we're applying this law, then they would.
Our local DOR representative recommends that we use the town's current practice to govern the funding of PEG access, which includes annual appropriation of funding by town meeting, the continuation of a separate cable PEG access fund, and the limit of expenditures from that fund for cable-related purposes only.
Right.
The first five words are the most key to me here. "Our local DOR representative recommends." So they're giving us...
They're telling us to break the law.
What you have there is hearsay because I don't have that from the DOR. What I have is a memo from David General telling us what DOR told him. But, but keep in mind, Carrie, that really isn't the issue.
Okay, then what is the issue?
I'm not sure.
Okay, then let's...
Because DOR also said, according to David General, that many towns do it differently. So you can't say, "You can have vanilla, chocolate, strawberry, and maple walnut." "You've been having maple walnut, therefore, you should keep having it." No, that means you can have any of those things.
Okay, then my recommendation is that we have a new contract coming up. The question is, are we going to apply mass general law? And are we going to, are we going to make the decision where we're going to move the money to general funds? Are we going to move the money to the general funds? And we are going to then have to draft a new contract in 2010? Or are we going to give them back the access and tell them to provide the access as it is?
I think there's a simpler solution to this. Because the conundrum that Howard paints is very real. You know, that if you do this, you're in violation of this. If you do this, you're in violation of that. I mean, it's reality. I think the simplest solution would be to petition for special legislation that addresses either, either general legislation that, that designates cable as enterprise eligible funds because it's a quasi-utility. All right, you know, utilities are all eligible under...
I'm a quasi-millionaire, too.
Well, before you said you had no money, Peter.
So utilities can be put in enterprise funds and ambulance services and those types of things, right? So we could petition the legislative delegation to say, "Please consider, you know, cable, you know, telephone, et cetera, you know, services to the town in the same light." Because there are a lot of similarities between, you know, the ambulance, you know, people who have call for service, they pay. It goes into the fund, which then, you know, pays for that.
I have a question.
Let me finish first. That's one option. Second option would be special legislation that, um, addresses the situation here in this town. And that would then just require, um, them to introduce special legislation that adopts whatever policy we agree on. So if this board agrees that they should be segregated funds, then that's the flavor of the special legislation that we would ask for. If we agree that they should be general fund, um, you know, funds, then that's what we should ask for. But that's another option that we have.
Howard, have you looked up the definition of utilities within the use of mass general law? Have you looked up that definition?
No, I have not.
See, I'm wondering if, under the definition of utilities, could it be already included?
It's not. Did you read the town council's letter?
We, uh, we either...
Well, wait, wait.
Are going to follow a contract.
You're assuming that he looked at that.
Or we're going to follow the Massachusetts general law. I don't care which, but we need to do one or the other. And the fact that, um, as Selectman Robertson said, "Well, there's no, it's not enforced." Well, the only way you can enforce most Massachusetts general laws is go to court. Because there are very few penalties scattered about Massachusetts general laws. So the only way you can, in fact, enforce, uh, unless a governing body like the Board of Selectmen, uh, the only way an individual can get the Massachusetts general laws enforced is go to court and get an adjudication from, uh, from the judiciary relative to that, the particular issue you've got. I think it's also, uh, key, my second question, was, um, it's been stated many times that DOR will not provide a written opinion in this matter. And a June 27, 2008 memo from the Finance Director has mentioned that our DOR rep said, "Keep doing what you've been doing." That's wonderful. The DOR rep said, "Keep doing what you're doing around the school-town maintenance account." And our auditor said, "Oh, that's against the rules. We really need to do it some other way." Who do we want to believe?
Yeah, exactly. We can always find a dissenting opinion. No, recognize it, yeah.
I understand about opinion also. So, so I said, and Town Council has said the same thing. Do we, and that was, that's an allegation because I've heard the Town Council has said, "Do what DOR rep says. Keep doing what you've been doing." And the end of my question was, "Do we have it in writing with the particulars from Town Council?" Let's see, uh, back on the 21st of September, I responded to, to an email, um, which said, "Howard, please see below an attached in response to concerns raised that citizens form at the Board of Selectmen's meeting of 8:25. The BOS is receiving this letter at the same time as you, so no discussion has occurred on its content." And basically, what Town Council said was, "Keep doing what you've been doing." By the way, other towns do other things. I responded to the email that I got, which was, "This response to your email of 9/1908 is not meant to be in plight. Your email does not in any way represent a response to my questions addressed to the BOS on the 25th of August. This is not a day-to-day issue, but one that is clearly the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen. And I look forward to their answers as the chair stated at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on 9/8, the big picture addressed by the BOS." So I expect the BOS to answer the question about, "What are we going to do about state law versus contract?" And, uh, and so we've, we've got something from Town Council which is ambiguous at best, in my view. Which is, "Oh, well, this one does this, this one does that, this one does this," which means you can do anything you want.
But there's no conflict between the contract and the state law. Because the contract said, "Said money is to be used for, among other things..."
Oh, no, but it sets up an account.
That doesn't matter. We have accounts, we have lots of accounts.
Yes.
There's no legal significance to those accounts. It's just an account. So there's really no conflict.
Uh, let's see, I happen to think there is because of the way this board and the finance crowd has acted, which is that money is invalid.
Well, that doesn't, that's what they've done. And I remember Ed Mahari saying that he's satisfied with how it's being done. He thinks it's the right way. But he didn't elaborate as to what, how he came to that conclusion. But the contract said, "The money is to be used for, among other things."
That's exactly what it says.
Yeah, production in cable, blah, 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 among other things.
But there's agreement in the contract to, in fact, set up a separate account that the Board of Selectmen agreed to set up
Yes.
for PEG access.
Yes.
That's, that's what the contract says.
Yeah, it does say that. It doesn't mean that all the monies have to be used just for that particular thing. It doesn't say that at all.
I understand, but the practice...
Well, that's an interpretation.
The concern, though, Peter, is that if the monies were treated as part of the general fund, then spending it on the, "Among other things" would reign supreme and there would be no money for our cable activities.
Well, that may, may or may not be true. I don't know.
Well, I think the board has a policy decision. The decision is, do you want the funds from cable access to close out at the end of the year? If you do, there's funding mechanisms or funding mechanisms that Town Council has noted. Establish a revolving fund, establish a special revenue fund. Those are the two funds where, at the end of the fiscal... Those are the two funds where, at the end of the fiscal year, similar to the school-town building account, which is supposed to happen, they would close out to become free cash. Chairman Kuros had talked about the alternative of filing for special legislation to maintain the practice of appropriating and segregating the account. That's the decision that you're gonna have to decide with the next, you could decide for the next fiscal year, if that's what you wanted to do, or the next contract that you have with your provider.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I can give you a motion to amend, to petition the state to amend the Mass. general law, so that we can continue on with the process that we have. And I would also recommend that we look at possibly lowering that fee, so that that account is not as fad, as fat as it is. I mean, why should we be taking this money if it's just gonna sit there and grow and grow and grow?
Well, we can buy two mobile television production studios. One's to reach Selectmen, follow us around. But why would we go through that trouble, Carrie?
Reality TV.
If we can keep doing what we're doing, right? At no cost, and we know, no grief, no aggravation.
Well, because apparently there's individuals that are questioning whether or not that's the situation, so we need to take a step so that we can move on to other things, and you know-
We're gonna renegotiate the contract, and that renegotiation, we can accomplish all those things.
But if we renegotiate for the same thing, then we're still, then we're back to square one.
Yeah, but we don't have to negotiate the thing, remember?
Granted.
That's what negotiation means.
Okay, then maybe we'd say, I mean, I, I personally believe that that cable money should only be used for cable. I'm sorry, I'm paying that, I don't want to be used for an ambulance fund, or for a senior son or-
Then change the law.
Right, and then that's what I'm saying, then we need to change the law, because I don't believe, you know, I, I am paying that fee along with my cable. That's connected. If I want to pay for my ambulance fee, or I wanna pay for the school, then it needs to come under a tax, which is what it is, a tax on my government, on my house, on the way that I live, in the town that I am.
A tax on your cable.
Cable's already taxed.
Correct, it's taxed separately by the state and by the federal.
And, and the cable.
Yes.
By the town, too.
But it's being taxed so that to give it to the cable.
I, I'm, I'm paying the money, you see?
So much, Peter.
When I pay the money, I think I should control how it's spent.
That's what I'm saying, and I want it to be spent just on cable.
I want it to be spent on something else.
If it's gonna be spent on ambulances, or schools, or, then I want everybody else in town to also pay a similar tax, so pick another tax that then everybody who's gonna use those services will also be paying.
You're, you're now into my third question, and my third question is, would it be a good idea to have a tutorial slash strategy session that includes the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, and the Cable Advisory Committee? It's obvious from this discussion that that needs to happen. And I would suggest, not being impolite, but I would suggest that you're not prepared to do that right now. And-
I would actually expand the, the circle of invitees to include someone from the DOR as well.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, I'll take, kind of, I guess I feel like I'm taking Peter's position. Why are we gonna bring in Town Council to talk about this again, when they've given it to us in writing? And he told us our opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't understand that. Now, that to me, I'll be with you, Peter, that's a ridiculous use of Town Council.
When I asked the question, Town Council had not yet written his four-page document. You can now use certainly your four, his four-page document in your discussions with the Cable Advisory Committee about, here are the instructions of how I want, how the Board of Selectmen wants the contract structured.
Hold, let me-
I mean, we can, we can direct the cable access to do that now.
We heard from the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee, nice young man, I'm sure, but he said he has no experience negotiating contracts. Right now, they're just trying to gather information to see what it is they're supposed to do, which is exactly what the board did last time around. For the life of me, I have never understood why people run for an office and then don't want to do the things that are part and parcel of their job. It's our contract, we should be negotiating it, but what do we do? The, the committee gave us a list of things that they wanted us to tell them to do, and we said, oh, that sounds great.
It's called delegation, Peter.
Delegation, yeah. Remember, the last committee cut the senior discount in half, got nothing in return.
But who signed it?
It was a complete giveaway.
Who signed it?
Who signed it?
The Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen.
We don't have to sign what they bring us.
Oh, but they did a lot of hard work, remember those words?
Yeah, I know, but, you know, we've heard a lot of people have done a lot of hard work, but you know?
The same thing, we established a bylaw review committee, oh, they did a lot of hard work, and look where it got us.
I, I, I just wanna ask a question, and this is not a rhetorical question. If, if the legislature would either grant special legislation to allow us to segregate the funds and treat them almost as a, an enterprise fund, all right, do we agree that that solves the, the problem relative to use of the funds?
Yes.
Yes.
You don't have a problem as to the use of the funds.
Well-
Okay, a perceived problem with the use of-
But what's the perceived problem?
Whether they are general fund or-
They're not available for use as a general fund set of monies. The town moderator, Peter brought up the town moderator. Town moderator has very clearly stated in the past that he would rule out of order any motion and any article made to use the cable access funds for any other purpose other than cable access.
And I guess we need to petition-
He said that in public, he said it in meetings, and whether you agree with him or not isn't the point. The point is that that's what the, that's the position the town moderator took, and that certainly inhibited some folks that I happen to know, who in fact then did not.
Well, and again, I can hear by the emotion in your voice that, that, you know, that there's not 100% consensus on that position that he took. So again, the, the question was, if the legislature were to approve some language that would segregate these funds, would that resolve that issue about whether, would that clarify? Just whether or not they can or cannot be used? There'd be no more question from anybody, right?
Because then you'd have a law which says, here's what-
Yes, a law that's in line with our contract.
That you can stand up and say, that's, that's what the legislature has said.
Did you wanna weigh in, Dave? No? You were looking at me before like you wanted to say something. I'm not, like, trying to drag you up here, I just, you know that look?
10:20.
I know.
Just the summation, Mr. Chairman, is, the bottom line is, as Council has said, as we found, as, as we've called around, wrote through lists, serps, every community, or not every community, but most communities handle these things differently. If you look at Mass. general law, Chapter 53, there are a list of different funds, funding mechanisms you can use. In this case, cable does not fall under any of them.
Right.
DOR refuses to, to clarify that issue any further, and has basically turned a blind eye on the whole thing, because of the various ways that various towns are doing it. So that's why our DOR, DOR rep has said, do it the way you're doing it. It's, it's, it's a fine way, it's the best way. Is it a legal way that, that's covered by Mass. general law? No. Council has made, made the same recommendation of going forward, if we wanna clear this up one way or the other, special legislation is, is the best way to go.
Yeah, I, I quite frankly think that the, the general legislation that just declares, you know, cable television a utility is, is probably a cleaner way to do it, and then everyone could, you know, opt in and create enterprise accounts and do whatever they want, as opposed to have to, you know, because, you know, someone's gonna read this in a paper that lives in Mendon and say, holy cow, how are we doing it in Mendon? You know, and then, and then their Board of Selectmen's gonna be talking about this for a year and a half, you know, and then they're gonna have special legislation, and then it's gonna go to Milford, you know, and so, I mean, ideally, they, they could solve this in one swoop, if they wanted to.
But like everything else, general legislation takes a lot longer, a lot longer to go through the procedural channels, just because you're affecting all, you're potentially affecting all 351 cities and towns.
And 50 senators, 40 senators have to agree.
Right.
Very difficult. Let's see. My fourth question has been answered, which was-
The 50 cent fee.
The 50 cents, et cetera, and approximately 80% of the homeowners in town subscribe to Charter. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's what the numbers say. I also asked the fifth question that evening. I did not include it in my email that I sent to you the next day, you, the Board of Selectmen, because it was answered. And my question was, oh gee, will the charge to the Cable Advisory Committee be on the The answer I got was, oh, yes. Well, if you remember, I ended up with a formal Freedom of Information Act request, and it, it turns out that the, the charge to the Cable Advisory Committee is buried in the minutes of August the 25th of your Board of Selectmen meeting. At a subsequent meeting, I suggested that it might be suitable or appropriate-
Go on the website.
-to have a Cable Advisory Committee page on the website.
I, I think this board agreed with you on that.
Well, as of this morning, it's not there.
Right, and Rick wants to talk about it. We've been working to put together this webpage, but it's written in different code than what the previous department pages were, so we're trying to work through the code to get it so that cable has its own page. And I know Rick, Barry's been involved, everyone's been involved, and along the same lines, they're trying to video stream our meetings as well. All of that is gonna be packaged together.
Do you all have any ideas to when it might appear?
No.
Thank you.
We're working on it, it's a work in progress.
Okay.
And just on that, so everyone knows, we've also, you know, we also took a vote and-
To post the contracts?
Put all the contracts on, and everyone understands-
And we said, when we went over to the new platform, the contracts would go over there.
Right, and that's still in the process also, so it's not that these things are, you know, being overlooked. They are in the process of coming up.
Could we at least just get the Cable Advisory Committee charge put in a PDF and just get it on any page that's out there on the document tab or something like that?
I think she could do it on the front page, right? Was that it, Barry's on it?
Right, right where, you know, the contact info is for, for the-
Put it on the Board of Selectmen's page, you're the issuing authority.
I mean, we could do that as well.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, if they do have, if they do have their own page that shows their contact information, I think it would be better suited to be on their page there as a PDF file.
Just not yet. If this, if this board feels that this is a compelling thing that has to go on to the website, this charge, then we'll, it's not gonna be in an obvious place unless we can try to get it on the front page. So we're, we're working on it.
I mean, you know, if I were looking for this, this charge, I wouldn't come to the Board of Selectmen page on the website, I would go to the Cable Advisory Committee page, so I would suggest that it-
Non-existent.
Right, right. But like, where Barry's-
You have their contact information.
That's how the Russians can't find out.
Right, okay. All right.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, do we need to take a motion that we act-
Well, yeah, I was, I was gonna ask for a motion that, that, that we-
Petition the state to amend-
Petition the, the legislature to-
Amend the Mass. general law to include cable access as a defined utility? Are we gonna go that, or are we gonna go special legislation?
I don't know if it gets done, I don't, you know.
Well, I mean, I understand the point of saying, but, I mean, nothing will ever get done unless you ask the question and start the process.
No, that's true. But we should ask two questions, but we should ask two questions of, of the legislative delegation. One is, you know, has the, the House and the Senate, and the State Senate, fully vetted this? You know, have they really looked at whether cable is a utility or not? And I'm sure they have, but, you know, let's, let's ask that question again, and then we should come up with language for special legislation that would be germane to Oxbridge. I would look to the Finance Director, I think, to, to work with Council under the Town Manager's direction to find a draft. What's that?
I mean, 'cause my recommendation is, is we go, I mean, it would honestly be best, in my opinion, that we go for the general law. I mean, if they're gonna hear, you know, a special petition from us, and then they could open the door, I mean, whether the state is doing this, it's still our tax money that the state is expending. You might as well, you know, if this is happening in other towns, we're not unique here. Let's, let's start the process to change something that's affecting more than just our town.
I mean, we should contact Senator Moore and the Representatives, Kajanski and Callahan, and describe our dilemma to them. Here's the end game, we don't care how we get there-
Right.
-whether it be special legislation for Oxbridge or general legislation, we'll defer to your judgment on that, but help us get there.
Right.
And, and then, and see what they, see what they say.
Okay.
So-
So it's a motion to petition the state, the, the form of petitioning is up in the air, depending on what they-
Yeah, but motion to petition the state for either general or special legislation to resolve the-
Dilemma.
The, the, the accounting for cable access funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
All right. And once we get some feedback on that, I, I would like to have, you know, as, as Howard suggested, you know, a session at some point to get our arms around this a little bit better as well. You know, with, with, and I, I would like DOR to be there, actually, if, if there's a chance we can get our local rep to participate in something like that, do you think? Yeah, okay. Okay.
Just, is the chair, do you wanna add anything, Senator Chair?
No? Okay. All right. The hour is 10:30, we've overshot our 10 o'clock target here. Do need to take care of a couple items, we can also defer a, a few others as well. Item B, under new business, we'll hold off on, I think we can hold off on item A, under discussion when to hold public hearings, you know, we're gonna operate under the, the general guideline that if it's not mandated, then we will not hold public hearings, we're just, you know, an appointment. But I, I still wanna address it and go through the list at some point, just to have a little bit of discussion on that, but I'd like to, just with consensus, just operate under the, the assumption that unless a hearing is required, then we're not inclined to do that. Or unless we're made aware that, that there are issues with a particular license, in which case then maybe it makes sense to have a hearing.
Do you still wanna move that forward to 12/8, or are you just wanna work under the guidelines you just described?
Yeah, I, I would say, have consensus to just work under those guidelines, and then we'll hold off on rescheduling this item for foreseeable future, is that?
Would you want a motion to amend that, amend that policy now?
Well, we don't, we don't have the actual policy in our package, we have-
We just have guidelines.
We have the guidelines.
Okay.
Which just kinda tells us what's required.
Right, I'm sorry, wrong one.
Well, the policy would be that public hearings will be held when required by the statutes, or by, by local bylaw.
Right.
Which is kind of an observation of the obvious, right?
But, 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 or when there are, you know, documented concerns.
Well, it always has the option to call a public hearing if it wants to hear from the public.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
And usually we're aware of those things because of the nature of the issue.
Yeah, you're right, okay. All right, then, I don't think we need any action there, really. Okay. All right, SEIU MOU ratification?
Yeah, I just need a, a quick motion to ratify the MOU, and then it will be incorporated into a successor agreement.
And it's in our packets as well, all right?
I thought we already did this, no?
We did it in an executive session.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Move that we ratify the agreement with the SEIU Local 888 dated 10 November 2008?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone just wanna give a 30-second summary, Jill, on, on the MOU? Have you ever, have you done that in public session?
I don't, I don't think I have.
I, I think it's worth- I think it's worth 30 seconds of airtime to let the public know what's going on.
Quickly, it's a, a change of hours to a four-day work week just for Town Hall members. The entire unit would receive a 3% increase effective July 1st, 2008 through June 30th, 2009. This is only a one-year successor agreement. And then the employees, effective in their December deductions, will pay a higher contribution for health insurance. The split will now be 75, 25, 25 are the employees. And any new employees hired after this date will pay a higher contribution of 30%. So the split will be Town 70 and Employee 30%. And then the contract's gonna expire, like I said, June 30th, 2009, so probably in January you'll begin negotiations again.
And also need to begin negotiating with the Police Department, is that right?
Police Department and DPW, just gave a, a request to bargain, I just got that. Their contract expires June 30th, 2009 as well.
All right. Findings from survey of employees regarding the GIC plan offerings. They just want to stop for just a minute? Yeah, and just as backdrop, we had, at least, you know, taken a look at joining the Group Insurance Commission, and had elected, I guess, at one point, the, the PEC, is that?
PEC.
I confuse the acronyms all the time. PEC, which is Public Employees Committee, made a recommendation that, not to move forward with the GIC, which could potentially offer some savings to the Town, savings to be determined, basically. However, with the Governor's budget maneuvers of September?
I believe it was September.
Yeah, late September. He opened up the window on the date to enter into the GIC, pushed it back to December 1st, it had been much earlier than that. So we figured we had another chance to take a bite at the apple here and revisit this, and suggested that we survey the individual Town employees to get a sense for what plan would they likely gravitate to if indeed we joined the GIC, and then try to make a more educated decision relative to whether we should try to move forward or not in this timeframe, so. That is backdrop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We distributed a survey to Town, School, Employees, and all retirees two weeks ago. It was due last Thursday. The School Department was very, very helpful in the fact that they, they have an internet-based service called Survey Monkey that their, that their group responded to. We took all the paper responses that the Town side received, inputted them into the software as well, and this, this was our results. We, we have a total of 450 employees and retirees on our health insurance plans. We collected 174 responses to the survey, overall 39% of our health insurance pool. Of that, of that group, 102, or 68%, stated that they would be unable to determine which GIC plan they would choose if the Town migrated to the GIC. Unfortunately, that, that leaves the data very difficult to interpret. So in the end, we really couldn't get a good idea, at least from the surveys, as to where, as to where the, the employees would migrate.
So we had 72 out of the 174 said, here's the plan that I would migrate to.
Yes, and most of them were valid.
So that 72 is out of 450, and your sense is that that's not fair representation in order to make a decision?
We don't, not for projection purposes, we don't, we, we would have liked to have gotten, gotten somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 40%. As a result, I, I think the initial, the initial forecast that we gave the Board a couple of weeks ago of the savings being anywhere between 20,000 to 200, depending on where they migrated, would probably hold up based, based on what we're seeing here. But it's still, it's still all conjecture. And the problem, the problem is, we had till October 1st, the first time around, when, when the Governor unveiled his changes that allowed us to go to December 1st, that's still a 60-day period. That's not really a, a long, long window for us to really get out a good marketing plan to really educate the employees and retirees and, and work with them to come up with exactly a, a potential choice. So it, it was a good effort, and we were, we were very pleased that we had that type of turnaround in, in a week's time.
Yeah.
But overall, I don't, I don't think there's enough there where we can really quantify based on that.
You know, you've given out to us the various bits and pieces of what's comprised or what's, what, what plans are in the GIC and what plans we now have, and trying to compare that to a reasonable standard, I'm having a difficult time.
Okay.
Could you, in all of your free time, take a gander at it? This is a breakdown of the basket of plans that are available to federal employees and inhabitants in Massachusetts. The plans that are in the basket, the cost of those plans. Could you sort of bounce that through, sort of let us know how many health plans we are, we are offering our employees that are not part of this particular basket?
I mean, the one thing, I, I guess I have, I have two questions. One, the federal government is exempt from some of the requirements that mass law requires that state, that if you're an employer in Massachusetts, there are certain health things you have to offer your employees that the federal government is exempt from. One specifically being is infertility. If you're a mass employer, you have to offer fertility treatments to your employees. But federal law does not. So that is going to, that affects...
Nonetheless, we need a basis, we need a basis of comparison to then question, why are these mandates being shoved down our throat, which is increasing our overall insurance cost on the Town?
I agree, and I, well...
Oh, okay.
Right, right, but what I'm saying, that is one very, that's one very expensive...
It's a very expensive thing. When you charge, when you dilute that very expensive cost for, you know, the hundred or so people that are gonna use it at a very high cost, and then spread it out over the entire pool, it raises everybody's cost.
I agree, I agree. The other question I had, you had said that of the ones who did respond, the majority chose the Fallon.
Yes.
Which was then choosing it based on cost, correct? Because Fallon was the best priced?
Not necessarily. Most of them, from what we could see, going through the surveys, were already on Fallon through the Town. So they went from the Fallon Town Plan to the Fallon, Fallon GIC Plan. Now, there are differences in the GIC Plan for Fallon over the Town, mainly in, mainly in deductibles and co-payments. But overall, if you're looking at the network, all of that remains the same. So it was an easy choice for them to decide which one they wanted, wanted to migrate to. It was a lot harder for the employees to come up with a replacement for Blue Cross, because that's not offered through the GIC. But from, you know, a, a quick note of, of the few that, that made those selections, it was pretty well evenly split between the, between the other two, that being the Tufts and the Harvard Pilgrim. But, you know, unfortunately, when most of your survey says, we don't know, it, it's a little hard to conjecture off of there.
From what I remember, wasn't the Tufts and the Harvard still a better price than the Blue Cross Blue Shield, so it didn't really matter which one they migrated to?
Well, they're a better price, but because, because they have less benefits than the Town Plan. So that, most of them are a better price overall. There's a greater cost savings to the employee because they're paying more, more out of pocket. So either, you know, that's why our original projection showed the vast majority of the Blue Cross group going there or going to the, the Commonwealth's PPO or the Unicare PPO, which offered similar benefits at a good cost, but, you know, without a complete listing. And, you know, I, I should point out that everything that the employees received and everything that even the school employees received electronically showed all the plans, all the costs. We gave them all the data, but it's a lot to process within a week.
Sure.
And, you know, unfortunately, that's the deadline we had to work with.
If we responded back that we wanted to enter by December 1st, when would this go into effect for the employees?
July 1st, the FY 10.
Right, next one.
You're gonna have to sign MOU between the PEC and the Town.
So it would be, you said FY 10?
Yeah.
July 1st, so it's for programs and plans offered July 1st.
No, that would be July 1st, '09 then.
Yeah, but FY 10.
Yeah, but fiscal 2010.
Right, right, okay. Oh, okay.
All right. And what, go ahead.
I mean, that's, I mean, if, if the low end was a savings of $20,000, up to $200,000, I mean, I don't see how, given the fiscal situation we could be in next year, how we could not still look at possibly saving $20,000.
But again, this board, as, as we learned from the communication from our legislative delegation, does not have the authority to make that decision. It, it's gotta be by the majority of the PEC. And despite our, our request that they, they endorse and allow the chief executive boards of cities and towns to have that authority, because we can enter into, we physically sign the contracts with, you know, with, with the, with the healthcare providers, and yet we're not allowed to choose what plans are available. And so we don't have that authority, fortunately, and I'm, I'm not sure that the PEC at this point feels favorably enough about joining the, the GIC. I want to ask one more question, and then can I move on here?
See, that's where I, I remain befuddled by the whole thing, that we don't have any control over what plans are offered. Why do we not?
And what do we need to change to get that control?
We have, we have controls over the plan we offer. We go out, we, we've gone out in the past, two years ago, we did an RFP or RFQ for healthcare providers, and we sent it, we sent it basically to all the, all the carriers that had a network within Massachusetts, and we wound up getting responses, if memory serves, from four. We had Maya, we had Harvard Pilgrim, Tufts declined, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is our current provider, and Fallon. Our, the, the part of our problem is, we're not a big pool. Maya would be, would be happy to welcome, welcome us into the fold, because, you know, they're, they're provided through MMA. However, you have a two-year signup in order to, in order to get into Maya, and you have no control over the second year cost.
So when, when we do the request for quotes, when is that going out again? Is that an annual thing?
Not necessarily annually, does not have to, it, it doesn't have to be, go out annually. We last did it two years ago. We have a new, new health insurance advisor on board right now. We're talking strategy with them as, right now, as to what we're going to do, but we, we certainly didn't get too much the last go-around, unfortunately.
A big way of controlling the costs of the premiums is to put the co-pays and deductibles at a reasonable level, rather than the fantasy land that they're not living in. So when we go out for quotes, can we not stipulate this is the level of co-pays?
No, not without collective bargaining.
It specifies in the contract what those will be?
The co-pays are, are a mandatory subject of borrowing. When David went out for one quote, he did get a, a quote for a higher co-pay. That's our, our voluntary, voluntary program, that if we want to pay a lower premium, we can pay higher.
Making it a, a subject of negotiation with the union, is this something that's been mandated on us, or something that we've agreed to do?
Oh, that's the law.
It's the law.
Change in work conditions.
No, it's nothing to do with work, it's a fringe benefit.
That's work conditions, the compensation is work conditions.
Yeah, but it's not required of everybody.
Huh?
Not everybody has to take it.
I, I know that. You have to, you have to negotiate changes in that.
Our, our strategy over the past couple of years had, had been one, one of two choices, either, either the co-pays or the actual contribution. We've opted to go with contribution level because you're getting a lot more bang for the buck versus the co-pay. When your co-pay goes up by $5, you're, you get an average savings of maybe 1%. We've, we've found that it's, it's a lot more expedient and a, and a greater savings to the Town to go after the, go after the change in contribution, and that's happening across the board. The, the next phase that we'd like to look at is, look at a, a plan very similar to the GIC that's offered through Blue Cross Blue Shield, called Municipal Blue. That's one that has higher co-pays, higher deductibles. It can be phased in over a two- or three-year period, that's what we want to look at next, but all of that will have to be bargained going forward.
Got one question, and then I want to wrap up with the last couple items real quick here tonight. We've heard that, you know, despite the two-month, you know, extension, we still only had 60 days. And we've heard last year and this year, not enough time to really understand all this stuff. When are the plans in the GIC first available? What's like the usual, the mandated date that the, the providers have to provide them to the GIC? Do you know that?
The GIC goes out to bid generally in February, March of every year. So then, so your plan costs are then available in time for their open enrollment period, which would be in May, very similar to ours. The prob, the problem that we keep running into with the unions and the employees is when we're, when we're, when we're looking at the mandated time that we have to join the GIC, let's forget December 1st, let's go with the October 1st. At that point in time, October 1st of the previous year, we do not know what our plans are gonna cost, and we do not know what the GIC's plans are going to cost, or what their offerings are going to be. And that tends to be the sticking point. You know, why should we, why should the PEC vote to enter into negotiations to go into the GIC when we don't even know what the plan designs are, what the plans are, and what the costs are going to be?
Okay.
So it sounds like we're gonna have this problem every single year.
Yeah.
You're bidding, you're basically bidding blind, is what you're doing.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. We've got a number of sets of minutes to, to accept, see if they...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Kevin, could I put on for new business in the next meeting, use of lawyer, and just leave it at that, use of lawyer?
Okay.
That way we can get out of it.
Access to Town Council, again?
Right.
That we discussed last meeting?
Yeah, it was old business, but I don't want to bring, bring it back tonight.
Okay.
I thought we finished that last time.
Bruce may want to revisit it though, so that's fair.
We didn't finish anything.
Okay. All right. Consent items, acceptance of meeting minutes from, excuse me.
Jill, I did have a question for you, while he's, while he's, while the chairman's over there. How are we doing on our diaros out of killed in the line of duty? Have anything?
Um, let me think. Store Commission? I'm sorry? Oh, no, I'm thinking of Peaceful Pond. I need to check with Kim on that, I got it confused with the science of the Peaceful Pond, Charles.
This was Mr. Ebling?
Mm-hmm. I know Kim has it on our pending list, so I'll check that.
Okay.
Want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Minutes of the regular session of November 10th. Do we have any comments or a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes of November 10th as stated?
Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to accept November 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? We have a, we have the special executive session minutes of October 14th?
Motion to accept.
Right, motion to accept, do we have a second?
Second.
They were...
Effort.
Oh, they're on, thank you. I'm like, I don't have those. Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a motion to...
Do we need roll call votes on executive session minutes? I think we do.
Okay.
What, a roll call vote?
Potashki, aye.
Kuros, aye.
Robertson, aye.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Aye, what are we voting on?
Just we're voting on executive session minutes and...
It has to be a roll call vote? It has to be a roll call vote?
I don't know if it does or not, but it's, I'd rather do it or not, do it.
And do we need a motion to release these to the public? I don't see any...
Even if minutes aren't accepted, once a decision has been made and communicated to the other party...
But shouldn't we have a positive statement so that staff will know that we agree?
Very nice.
Okay. So do we have a motion to release the October 14 special session minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Roll call vote? Petasky, aye?
Roberts, nay.
Desl, aye.
Kuroz, aye.
Agatha, aye.
Next set is the October 27, no, October 27, continued on November 17 special session meetings, minutes?
Yeah, the only problem with that is the continuation starts on the second page and I wasn't there. So there should be a notation that, you know...
It is at the top.
You were absent from the...
You were absent from the November 11 continued meeting.
Oh, that should say 17.
Oh, it's a typo then.
In both cases.
Yeah, there's a typo then.
Okay, we'll make the correction.
Are you looking at the right side of here? I think you're not.
Yeah, right here.
No.
It's at the top.
Oh, oh, okay.
Top of the first page.
Oh, okay.
There's a typo on the date.
He also, right, because we also had...
Okay. Make sure there's no other type of...
I'll look through it quickly, I haven't seen anything. So the motion to accept subject to the changes, the date questioned, from 11 to 17? Did we have a motion? Okay.
Oh, did we have a motion?
You're the motion.
Oh, I'm the motion, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote? Petasky, aye?
Kuroz, aye.
Roberts, nay.
Desl, aye.
Agatha, aye, but just for the session.
For the...
Fourth, 27.
October 27. Do we need a motion to release these to the public?
I think you should, it consists of...
Yep.
Motion to read them. Second?
So moved.
Okay. Roll call vote? Petasky, aye?
Kuroz, aye.
Roberts, nay.
Aye.
And this was on here, I guess we need to discuss the particulars of the...
I think you wanted to make some corrections to the particulars. I think you're all set. So I have some for you to sign.
Okay.
Is that it for today?
A motion to adjourn?
So what?
All in favor?
Aye.